Let's call it to order first. We're late. It's my fault. Everybody ready? I don't know whether Abby encountered the same thing I did, but I was coming down the hill and on the way to the meeting and there were three raccoons like converging in one spot on the road and I had to slam my brakes on it when I did. My briefcase went flying and everything went over them. I didn't hit a raccoon.
I was gonna say you saved the raccoon.
I saved the raccoon, but I just spent a few minutes in the car trying to push everything off the floor. So anyway, it's always interesting. We do have a quorum. Thank you guys all for coming. There are several people who said they couldn't come tonight. I think I emailed, but I'll just mention it. Mike's out of the country. Lyndle had told us at the last meeting that she was, had a commitment out of state today, this week, and I just got an unfortunate phone call from poor Kelly whose car broke down when she was in New York. So she, she did say that I think I won't be able to make it. She will try if she can, but it sounded like transmission problems. In my mind, she's not going to make it, but if she does, great. But thank you for the rest of you for coming. Seven minutes after. So why don't we do introductions? We have extra people here tonight, so we'll just start down with Jeremy, if you don't mind, Jeremy, and we'll just go around the room to introduce ourselves.
Sure. Jeremy Callaway, and I'm from Newfoundland.
Patty Dixon, and I'm from Jamaica.
Bummin Madhavi from Newfoundland.
Twi La Bolden from Townsend.
Bruce Parliament, Jamaica.
Joe Winrich from Townsend.
Emily Long, Newfoundland.
Stephen John, the superintendent. Dr. Dorfman will be with me shortly. She's making copies of the budget for the public.
Evan Riley, student member.
Janine Agusbarabextrom, student member.
Bud DeBonnis, chief financial officer.
Kathy Yell Dillon, director of special education.
Melanie Zwalinski, the director of student services at Leland and Gray.
Ron Shelley, Jamaica, and I happen to be a music teacher here.
Gerald Julinski, and I'm from Newfoundland.
Samantha Gobek from Brooklyn.
Dan Walke from Newfoundland.
Barbara's back.
Oh, sorry, Barbara, Mike's at school later.
And we have Mike from the reformer. Hi, Mike. So welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. We've got an agenda. I hope everybody has a copy. If you don't, there is one.
Yeah, I wouldn't take chairs over there, but I think everybody's covered.
Okay, great.
And there's pay orders too.
Oh, and there are pay orders. Have you already done them?
Yep.
Oh, great. So someone else needs to commit to the pay orders while we're doing the rest of our meeting. Anybody willing? Oh, thank you, Bummin. Appreciate it. Okay, so where first up is members of the public. We have members of the public. Thank you for coming tonight. I really appreciate you being here. Anything? Sure, go ahead.
I guess it hasn't been presented yet, but I came because I heard about the budget. So once again, I would like to create a couple more minutes to make you think about it. One of our biggest dilemmas at this school is shrinking population, threat of consolidation with other schools, and the fact that we don't have as many, we need to get more kids here. So constantly our administration is saying, how can we get more kids here? How can we get, you know, we get these really gary kids and then they go to Bern Burton or they go off to some other place? How can we get them and retain them and keep them here? Really good question. So we're doing a lot of early court things. We're ramping up the academics. We're, you know, demanding everyone get on the same track. You know, these are all good things. They give us the, they're helping us achieve a certain amount of, clearly we have a goal of retaining excellence. So that's a good thing. But when you were trying to attract great students to help the general population of students, which is very important, we need great students at this school to help. Especially, we're trying to get every kid at this school that's college grown, which is a very hard task. To do that, you don't do it just with teachers. You do it with teachers and with great students also. So we really need these great students. And so it's a very legitimate question to be asked, how do we get these great students to come and stay at our school? I'm telling you, you don't do it by cutting music and art. You do not achieve results by doing that. This school has a reputation for some things. Journey East has done really great work for this school. That's something that Journey East cannot carry the load for this school by itself. The school also has a reputation over the years of fine arts program. We have a stellar theater program. We've had a stellar music program. Over the past number of years, not too many, but a fair number of years, scheduling problems have made very difficult, made it very difficult for the music program, for instance, to get up numbers of students. This is a scheduling problem. This is not a choice problem. This is not an interest problem. This is a scheduling problem. As we have worked on this academics and we brought in support classes, which require that someone's taking willingly, so they're doing great, they take support class, so they have actually two classes, so they get through their one English class or the one math or the science class. Those are great ideas, but those take away, you know, that time comes from somewhere. So we have a scheduling problem, which has diminished the music program already. Then, we look at the numbers and we say, oh gee, our music numbers are down. Not very much interesting music. Maybe we should just cut out some music programs. Okay, so last year they wanted to chuck music out to after school, and luckily we changed that to happen. Now this year you want to get rid of a cappella. You want to get rid of samba. You want to get rid of pep. So you take a school that has a culture of music and you remove the public faces, several of the public faces of music. A cappella is a top shelf unit. It's a step above and beyond anything you expect to see in a high school. It screams excellence from every direction. It doesn't have a lot of people in it. It's a thing that people have to apply to get into. Your, a cappella isn't a thinker forty feet. It's a group or whoever is that's a thief. It's an elite musical group, which should be an absolute, and is, is an absolute source of pride for the school. That's what an elite student and a parent of an elite student looks for in a school. It's something that is a step above, a step beyond. You, if you want to have a music program in the school, you need to have this ability. You have a game ring. You have a pep band at the game. There's musical accompaniment to the game. There's a life of music in this school. Samba band, probably the only band in all of Vermont is a samba band, a high school band. An original idea, interesting idea. Gives a chance for students who are not, who don't know instruments, they still get a chance to perform in band when they put it into their schedule. That's being cut out. So if you want to guarantee that Leland and Gray slowly disintegrates and becomes an empty shell and gets lost in the maw of school consolidation, then by all means, get rid of the music program. Cut down on the arts program. Just concentrate on your other things and you will see the students tripulate away. They'll go to other schools. Pretty soon, our numbers will be down far enough that we can just get stuck into some other place and we can close the doors and retire. You're dreaming if you think you're going to achieve this academic excellence and you're going to get kids here coming at the same time if you insist on every year trying to cut the arts. Because what this tells us is, we don't care, you can tell us you care about the arts and put the A and C, but when your actions belie that entirely. Because every year you come around and say, what in art, music, what in those programs can we cut? That's something, these things are really valuable in principle. When it comes right down to push and shove, they don't matter a bit because it's all about dollars and cents. So I'm here to tell you, if it's all about dollars and cents, that's a crime. That's a crime that we think it's all about dollars and cents, but that seems to be the way this country runs. So I'll give up. That's a crime. I can't stop that crime. But if you want the school to continue, if you don't care about art, if you don't care about music, if you want this school to still be here in 10 years, then you're going on the wrong track. I guarantee you that. Take away these programs, this school will continue to tank, will continue to lose really great kids, and all the support classes and all the academic talk in the world will not get them to come here if we don't have a viable program. The drama program, which so far has escaped the cuts, who knows what will happen with any of them. The drama program has not escaped it. The reason the drama program can put on such great quality shows is that we have a quality music department. You know, we get stuff from our students because they've had training. They have a sense of professionalism. That's a sense that a lot of, a lot of high schools do not have. If we want to have great students, we already have something here. We have a sense of professionalism and a really elite sort of music situation. We're killing it. We're killing it every year with these suggested cuts. And once again, you're going to kill it, death of a thousand pets with your, with your, so. I don't want to be rude. I'm going home because I've been waiting a long time, but I had to come to this meeting to say that because this is a big mistake. And even if you don't care about the arts, you're shooting yourself in the foot.
Since you're saying you're going home, I just, I wouldn't respond, but I, but some of the things you said were actually not true. We do care about the arts. We do care about all of our students.
Well, actions, actions and words.
I understand what you're saying and I'm not trying to be defensive. I'm just saying I don't want you to walk out the door right now since you said you're going home and thinking that that's how we are because that is not how we are.
I think I have to go by what you did.
Sure. You certainly can. So thank you for your opinion. And I'm sure there's others I want to make sure we get. Anybody else want to speak?
I wanted to hear the, and read the budget proposal and then
That is coming up.
and see what else. No, then later on, would I be able to have time to comment?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else say anything? You want to come? Go ahead. Okay. We've got revisions or corrections to the agenda. Do you have any, Jeremy?
I don't believe so. I think, no, I think we're all right. I don't believe an executive session is necessary. But, okay, we're in, we're all right. We can just pick them off the list. Barring unforeseen circumstances.
Unless the board wants one. Okay. Correspondents? Anyone have a correspondence? Anyone have any? Okay, we'll move right along. We're on administrative reports.
It's all about the budget today.
It's all about the budget. So thank you, Durin, for sending multiple revised version of the budget rationale. Does everybody have their copy of it? I, my printer died out, so I don't only have an electronic copy, but I got the one, the latest that you sent.
Yeah, we may have asked. The public doesn't have it.
We don't. Do you need me to make copies?
I think, well, I think Durin will have to print a copy. I just came straight from Dover and I'm sorry, but I've been bringing, I have one that's marked up, but it's not appropriate.
I want to make sure it's the latest one that the board got that we printed out.
Right.
I could go up and do it if there's another, if you have the superintendent's report or something else that.
Yeah, we can move along. I think we want to devote most of this meeting to the budget.
I think, you know, I don't, I hate to do a lot of print copies, but on the other hand, I think it's really important. The rationale is a pretty big piece of this and it has been for years, so.
Also, we certainly will be posting the rationale on the website
Right.
once we have this meeting concluded and we know what revision may be necessary in response to questions from, from certain parties.
Okay. So we'll come back to Durin and we'll move on to you, Stephen.
Yes, I sent out a superintendent's report a while back. It ended with some pictures of Journey East. That's how you could scope it out. The board, I presume, all got it. If you didn't, no, I'm concerned about you guys. Did you get it? Okay. Yeah, that's the rationale. I was worried about my superintendent's report from before.
No.
Because you should be included on the email list.
That's what I was going to ask.
And that's what you have to get connected with Allison if you are not receiving my superintendent's report.
I think you guys are. Whenever we send to the Leland and Gray board group, you guys are getting it? Okay, I want to make sure you are. That's important.
It was, it was about a four-page monster with, ended with some pictures of their Journey East delegates. And I want to thank everybody in the community for hosting students and making that, you know, once again, a successful event. I attended the performance, which was really, once again, remarkably fine. And certainly, it was a treat to see the principal who was here 10 years ago. He reminded me that he'd been here before and unfortunately didn't recognize my face, but anyway, we got along well.
Time flies, right?
And time flies. Yeah, I probably look a little different too. But anyway, I'd open up to any questions. I don't have anything new to report. I know that there'll be a WCSU meeting next Wednesday that you want to make sure you're adequately represented as a Leland and Gray board. That is the presentation of the Wyndham Central Supervisor Union budget, the so-called superintendent's budget, which also includes administrative costs for special education to some degree and triple E, although you're not in the role of that assessed as Leland and Gray. You don't have to pay for the early essential ed part of that budget. So that will be, I hope to, Bud and I hope to mail that out, to email it out to all the board members later on this week, so you have some time to look at it and come prepared for your questions. That was the purpose of our mailing the summary of the budget to you ahead of this meeting, not so that you had an opportunity to discuss it, but I had an opportunity to read it carefully. In the past, we've had meetings where the board has expressed legitimate concern and the public about receiving something and not being able to give it a fair, fair reading, being kind of put on the spot at the meeting. So we're trying to avoid that. But for the public, this is the first presentation of the budget, so I have hard copies here when we get to that part of the meeting. And certainly, this will not be a meeting of decision. This presumably will be a time for the board to discuss the public to ask questions, the board to ask questions of the administration's recommendations. And then we'll seek direction, further direction from the board, leading to our next meeting in December. And if another meeting's necessary, we'll schedule one. Is that right?
Are you still on Wyndham Central?
Well, I was talking about Leland and Gray at that point.
Because we actually have, yeah, we have, we had a little confusion around the dates and I got them straightened out in my mind with Durin last night. We didn't put on here that we have a meeting on December 2nd.
Right. Okay.
For Leland and Gray.
I should have put that in. Yeah, okay. That is December 2nd, if we're available.
Are you all, everybody's aware of that?
Now, that will be before the Wyndham Central Board has an opportunity to vote on the budget, which
Wyndham Central votes, I mean, should vote.
You haven't, you haven't heard. Well, yes, or the 10th, depending on how things go.
Right, that's what I said.
And likewise, in your case, on the 2nd or the 9th.
We probably will not be voting on the 2nd, no matter what, because we like to hold one budget information meeting so that, and publish it that way. It's a budget, it's a special meeting and it's all about budget so that community can come and share with us. And then we would come back on December 9th, is it? 10th?
It would be 9th.
No, 9th. It's the 9th. And then we'll vote on the budget at Leland and Gray that night.
Yes. Quite an exciting scheduled meeting.
But I think it's important, just like at Wyndham Central, we've made a decision to hold a meeting in between to allow plenty of feedback.
Right. Unless there's something else, I think we should move on to
Any questions for Stephen?
Could we be sure, what's the meeting on the 2nd for? I don't see it anywhere on mic.
It's our, it's our special meeting that we always hold between the two months. Well, it's, it's a budget deliberation meeting. We hold a special meeting in between the November meeting and the December meeting, regular board meetings, so that we can present the budget, have a single topic, so that people can come and share their thoughts. The reason it's December 2nd as opposed to the previous week is because the previous week is Thanksgiving and it was making it harder. I think we had that conversation or something. I did double check with Durin. Durin did have it in her calendar and I had it in mine, but I, for some reason, I couldn't find it in the minutes.
Yeah, I, I'm probably remiss in not having remembered that. I have to look and see, because Allison usually asks me if I have something, so.
Well, when I talked to Durin about it, she, I believe, emailed it to all of you so that we're, I know it came by email. But it's an important meeting. I think we need to hold it. So I want to make sure we can, is everybody okay with that on the board?
Mayor Culpea, I have words for all that night, but we'll try to rearrange. That's their first reading of the budget.
Well.
Emily?
Yep.
So that December 2nd meeting, it's possible then between public, everyone's input, since no votes taken, then there's still time if there's a consideration, reconsiderations of anything. So there's time to then maybe change. And then at the 9th is when you give your final version out to be voted on.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's the whole purpose of it, just like every year, holding that middle meeting so that people can come and share their thoughts on that. Everybody good? You all? Okay, CFO.
Okay, this is our usual, let's start from both ends. Our usual monthly summary of where we stand financially here at Chrisley Year 15. There are a couple of things I want to draw to your attention. It is our plan to get our invoices for tuition issued this week. I think some of you know that more than one of us has been indisposed in the business office, so we're running a little bit behind on that. I apologize for that. So we're looking to collect some revenue. The other thing I want to bring to the board's attention, if you look at the bottom of the page and you see that we've expended 31, 30.97%, 31% of our budget at this, at this stage of the game, that, those numbers look encouraging to me because there are a number of areas where we've paid the SU assessments at 50%. So if you look throughout that, that last column, I think we're, we're probably in pretty good position in terms of our expenditures falling within our, our adopted budget. I hope at, at the half-year point to have a more thorough analysis of that, but as we take the snapshot today, I think our expenditures are, are in line with our expectations.
We call our attention to the tuition line. Where would that come in on the revenues at the top, right?
Yeah, it's at the top. The, the budget code at the top is misnamed.
Yep.
It's, it's all tuition. It's not just
Not just Athens.
Right.
And that's what you're referring to about our income being invoiced, to be invoiced so that we
Right. And our expectation is to have those invoices out by the end of the week.
All right. Questions for Bud?
This tuition of 899,000 represents how many students?
We have to know.
The budget was, the budget was built, I think, with 61 students anticipated. I'd have to check to see what, what our actual is. But looking at, looking at last year's budget development, there was an assumption of 61 students.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Does everybody have a chance to look it over well?
Yeah, don't, you can come up with questions later. It's not, it's not limited to this.
Anything else? We'll come back to you, Durin, but I just want to mention the Career Center report. I know you didn't make it to that meeting. Was either
Right. No.
And Lyndle, and Lyndle was out of, she couldn't make it. So she'll, she'll fill us in.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no other questions for Bud or comment, we'll move back to you, Durin. Thank you, Bud. You're welcome.
Okay, welcome everybody. It's nice to have our company. Thank you. Got a dozen copies here.
We'll all take a copy of that too.
Okay.
Sorry.
This was Tim?
Nope.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is your rationale, right?
Yes.
Okay. I think that if I might suggest, Emily, we save this rationale, which is really connected to the budget's presentation.
Moving to new business.
Yeah.
Take care of old business first?
Yes.
Bump the, from the principal's report? I mean, I don't want to bump the principal's report. If there's anything besides budget.
That's right. That's right.
We've been pretty busy with the budget.
So, so nothing to report besides budget?
Other than we've had so, so far, a day and a half of our in-service days. Tomorrow is the in-service day, additional day that you had approved of this summer. And it's been fabulous, to quote one teacher, it's been the best PD Leland and Gray has had in 10 years.
Great. That's good.
About that. And there's a couple of folks out here who might be able to attest to that. So, thank you.
All right, thanks. So we're gonna, that'll be it on the principal's report until we get to new business, which is front and center for a principal and superintendent. But let's pop into old business. Everybody set? We'll do this quick. Confirm members of the negotiations council. I, I put this on here and I know Kelly wanted to speak to this tonight. She called me. Patty, you had, in some ways, you had your arm twisted at the last meeting. And Kelly had shared with me after the meeting that she did have some interest in serving on the negotiations council. Not that she wanted to take your place, but that if you really did feel like you couldn't do it, that she, she needed to go home and check her calendar and her schedule with her family. But if she, she did let me know that if it was a problem for you, she would be willing to step up into the role. So I told her I would share that. That's why it's only on here. I know Joe, Joe has confirmed for it. You're the appointed member.
Yeah.
But we wanted to give you the opportunity to say, I can't do it, you know, because honestly, it was partly my fault. You said you'd see, and then I said, well, why don't we just appoint you?
No, that's fine.
So are you still willing to?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, just in case, you know, if something comes up and you can't do it, we'll just appoint Kelly. But she just wanted to share it. So, okay. Very good. Thank you for that. I mean, I don't think there's a schedule yet?
There, the dates are there.
Oh, right.
On that paper, possible date.
Okay, so the 4th and the 11th of December. So think about those.
Those are the Thursdays.
And that's the schedule so far.
Is there any, well, it's not confirmed.
They're likely to be, they're likely to be on Thursday.
That's the question, is Thursday?
And they are not going to be on the third Thursday of the month. So if you wanted to target your calendar, that would be the most promising dates.
Not the 3rd, you say?
Not the 3rd Thursday of the month.
Okay.
The reason that
So it could be any of the other Thursday.
The 4th and 11th are tentative.
The 4th and 11th are tentative pending confirmation of other members of the council.
Is it usually two, two times a month?
No, not, well, we hope, we'll have to see how things go. You know, it's possible we come quickly, but yeah, we meet first and then we schedule the next one usually is what happens.
Good idea to have a couple first.
But it's good to have a couple lined up. If you can make both those dates, I'll at least consider you to confirm.
December. Okay, so you're good. All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Negotiations for the teacher's master contract will be scheduled. That's on here. That's the two dates.
That's what we just talked about.
I don't know if anybody has any other feedback on that. If not, now we can move on.
And I'll be included on emails about that?
You absolutely will.
I'm gonna try to, yeah, I put together that council right now. I do have the names, but I haven't gotten email out officially pending receipt of these proposed dates from the association.
So we've appointed two official people, so
Yes, and so have all the other boards.
Okay, great.
Appointed one. So we have, we do have a, you know, we do have a council.
Good. All right, so we'll tentatively hear that it's on the 4th and the 11th and just let us know. Okay. Review and discuss proposed budget. Now we're back to you, Durin. Thank you.
So everyone has a copy who requested electronically. I, well, first want to thank everyone who participated in this budget development process, including Melanie, who played an instrumental role, as well as Peter Golick, Bud, Stephen, among others, and the participation of the faculty early in the process for the potential requests. And I'm just going to read the first sentence in the introduction to begin. "The educators of Leland and Gray strive towards excellence in education, reaching the personal aspirations of every student and fostering the broader development of social and collaborative learning that is the hallmark of public education. Leland and Gray has an anticipated enrollment of 342 students next year, which is a 15% decline over the last five years. And as a result, it necessitates reconsidering the allocations in our budget as to what is fiscally responsible and still a high-quality program. And I'm happy to see the turnout. So early in the budget process this year, so much feedback can be given. And I look forward to the deliberations of the board and the community because it does cause us to, or the board members representing their communities, to make difficult decisions." At the October board meeting, it was requested that the administration prepare a budget that was a zero percent level funded budget. And we created a budget that was as close to that as advisable, which is a zero point one eight percent increase over last year." I'm gonna begin with the program reductions, which follows the bottom of the first page, and then to increases in the budget. I'm sorry, I didn't thank Abby Dillon, who also was a participant in this process, and who can, she's come tonight to help explain more of what our most substantial increase is. But first, two reductions. While discussed in previous years, at this point, the recommendation is a reduction from three full-time teachers to two full-time teachers for next year, which would be the elimination of French as a foreign language at Leland and Gray. There are a number of students enrolled this year, though there are two fewer courses offered because of low enrollment. And we would come up with a solution for students who want to continue in French, either via online learning or with continuing staff at Leland and Gray, particularly for French II for the seventh graders that are now in French I to be able to continue on to French II. If it, do, do you want me to just keep going, or do you wanna interject and ask as I go through each piece? What would be the pleasure of the board?
Do you want her to review the whole thing, or do it by piece?
All right. I'll just keep rolling.
Don't hesitate to interrupt and ask a question from the board, okay?
The next area for a reduction is in the Unified Arts of Physical Education, Family, Consumer Science, and Health. Because of the smaller seventh and eighth grade classes next year, class sizes in the forties. And so, those electives, which are required courses for those two grade levels, would have fewer sections, going from four sections to two or three sections next year. So, in each department, you can see in the chart, there's a very small reduction, which is point one seven is the equivalent of a, of a period of an eighth-period day, or one block of the eight blocks. And so, the total change together is a halftime person. There is someone who retired last year, who has been continuing to work half-time. And it will, those, the, the remaining positions proposed for next year are existing staff of three full-time teachers.
Can I clarify for those of you that are mathematically obsessed like me? The health is really a point, a zero point six 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 six. Okay, it's a third, two-thirds. So, just keep in mind that when you add, you know, point one seven, point one seven, and one, point one seven, you'll, you'll get point five one. But in fact, those are all repeating decimals. That's why they end up to be a point five, you know, point five. And you can use that same method on the first column there in that table.
And I should mention that for the three current faculty members remaining, we'll have reconfigured responsibilities, all of which they are currently certified to teach in. So, we wouldn't need to do additional professional development that's within their area of licensure. Driver education, it is recommended that we move from three sections of driver's ed to two, which includes the driving time for the students participating. It's about twenty students per section. And so, several years ago, before I came here, so it must be seven or so years ago, there had been a full-time driver's ed teacher. But the numbers warrant, at this point, for there to be a halftime driver education teacher. But we do intend to offer it both fall and spring semesters, which is necessary around students' birthdays when they become legally eligible to enroll in driver ed. In the school administration, we have reassigned responsibilities already this year, to an extent, as a, as a pilot. And it's been very successful in the first quarter of the school year. And we were able to make the decision that we could reduce the position of a support staff member, par educator, who is currently full-time, well, the position is currently full-time in the planning room. But that would be reduced to half-time, because, primarily because our director of athletics and activities has taken on some disciplinary responsibilities during the school day, and that has been very effective. The next cluster in Visual Art, Music, and Computer Science. The change for the first and the third areas listed there, Visual Art and Computer Science, is actually not a reduction in force, as you'll see on the top of page three, but a reallocate, a reconfiguration of responsibilities. The low, which is, the, the, the average enrollment in an art class is, is ten students. And so, it is, and also because, for other reasons, it's possible to reduce Visual Art by a, one course, essentially. And that means fewer sections of, say, Foundations of Art. And also, fewer sections in the Unified Arts, because, like I said before, with middle school classes being smaller, then there only needs to be two or three sections, as opposed to four sections, as there is this year, of the nine-week rotation. But the computer science courses have increased enrollment. It has become a very healthy program at our school. And the specific skill set of the computer science teacher will be needed as there is going to be a reduction. And if you look a couple of lines, a couple of paragraphs down, where it says information technology, which is a Wyndham Central Department or function, and they are reducing their staff from two to one point five positions for next year. However, some of the responsibilities, where it says due to shifts in job responsibilities, some of those responsibilities are going to fall on Leland and Gray administration and faculty. And that's where that point one seven is gonna come in, that I will, that increased computer science and other technology will be necessary for the functioning of our school. I'm gonna jump into social studies. We're still rolling along?
Just call attention to the fact that music staff is not being reduced.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to set that. I wanna, I, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that at all. Let's go back to music. Sorry. Is that what you're gonna say, Bobbin?
Yeah, you just go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry. I just jumped over my highlights. My apologies. Music enrollment has grown with the creation of a required general music course for all seventh graders. And we are looking to sustain our music teacher positions, which is one point six seven FTEs. The number of students participating in the after-school music program last year was twenty-seven. For all of the programs, there are seven co-curricular music programs, which stipends are associated. And the total cost of that, you see, is twelve thousand six, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. So, in this proposed budget, there's a reduction of funding to the stipends with the decision given to the music teachers as to which of the co-curricular programs would run. I did want to mention, that I didn't write it in the proposal, was that last year, there were reductions in athletics, also due to low enrollment. So, there was, in, in previous years, we had seventh and eighth grade soccer, baseball, basketball, for both boys and girls. And because of low enrollment, we estimated in our budget this, for this year, was that there would be only one section of middle school baseball, one section of middle school softball. So, it eliminates like, you know, about fifteen hundred dollars for each one of these areas. And there are four areas that were reduced in, from this year's budget in athletics. Sorry. I apologize again for jumping ahead. Was there another, something else you wanted to ask, Bobbin?
Just to clarify, so, there are seven co-curricular music stipends. And the, for a total cost of twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-six. The, the proposition is to reduce that by nine thousand dollars. So, the balance of thirty-six hundred will be left used for these seven co-curricular music activities.
Well, we wouldn't be able to run seven.
Right. So, Dan earlier mentioned acapella and samba. What are the other five?
Do you want me to speak to that?
Sure.
Um, okay. There's, um, the high school jazz band. There's the middle school jazz band. There's acapella and samba. There's pep band. And then, there are two positions called program director, program director and assistant, which were put in there because of the district, all-state concerts, Memorial Day graduation class night, the things that were expected of those teachers. So, that's not a particular group. Is that good enough for now? Tho, those are, did I say all the positions?
That's the seven. That's the seven.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I maybe later like to say a little bit more about it, but the-
Yep. I'm-
That's the answer to your question.
Thank you.
Okay. In social studies, for a number of years, there had been support for professional services, which was to Journey East for the program director. We have had an increase of enrollment of tuition-paying students from China for, this is four and a half students. We have one student who is coming for just one semester. So, we anticipate continuing sustainable levels for, of funding for Journey East. So, we're proposing that the, that this budget has fifteen thousand dollars to support Journey East. I mentioned before about information technology. So, I'll move on to the summary with, in total, the reduction of full-time equivalent positions from thirty-five point, thirty-three to thirty-three point sixty-five, a reduction of one point six eight full-time positions. Not included in this is that we have four special educators or case managers employed by Wyndham Central, who are, who are serving Leland and Gray students. Shall I just move on to increases? Versus building and maintenance, there has absolutely been an increase of building and campuses overall because of the many more after-school programs funded by the Twenty-First Century Grant, as well as our own local community, and the summer seat camp, plus other summer activities that take place. And so, there is an increase of two point five four percent from our current school year, eleven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. Capital improvements, which were funded at zero this year to substantially reduce the budget when we needed to do reductions back in March. That there is a recommendation that we have a budget of thirty-eight thousand five hundred to meet our capital needs. And there is a list of the areas that are most pressing to be addressed it. Of course, there is much more. We would love to do, but we are trying to come, be as, as frugal as possible, addressing the, the areas of greatest need first. At our October board meeting, the question of dual enrollment funding was discussed at length. And I was requested to look into what would the cost be for next year if we covered all of the fees associated with dual enrollment for all of our students. So, this year, we have a hundred slots filled of students who are either attending Community College of Vermont, Linden State College, and SAT actually doesn't charge us this year, so that's a great thing. And next year, we will have to pay for two students, not two students, two schools, two, two courses during the junior or senior year for all of our students who request it. And if we were to do it for all of their dual enrollment courses, then we would anticipate that costing about fifteen thousand dollars. And if we did it for, although not written in here, that's what was calculated and what we put together for our budget. But that would be, if we did not cover all the students in just what was required by the law, it would be about nine thousand. There's a small change in cooperative education. Initially, last year, it was budgeted as a full-time position. But then, there was a retirement and a different configuration. The position is being shared by two faculty members this year. And so, we, when we had a reduced budget last spring, we were able to reduce that position slightly from a full-time to zero point nine three. Next year, we anticipate that being a one person and it being at a full-time position. So, it's a very, very tiny difference, but it is a sliding space. Yes?
Ready for special ed?
Sure.
Okay. All of you have a rationale in front? Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna make sure, before we jump into special ed, because that's a pretty big separate. Is there any other questions or comments? Are you ready to go to special ed? Are you sure they'll have questions?
Yeah.
They're coming.
Right. Keep thinking. So, on the special ed rationale, I want to call your attention, Abby and- Excuse me. Abby and I have met today, this afternoon, and reviewed these figures with Bud. And so, I do have some favorable changes there. They're not very significant, but I want to make sure that you recognize the issue about special ed is often that we have some further refinements happening. And I, I can't guarantee that our needs won't change between now and the next budget, you know, your next meeting on the second of December. Because Abby can attest to this by certain anonymous anecdotes. But at any rate, what can happen is that we have to, administratively, we have to make sure we're presenting to the public the budget, which is as close to the projected needs of our special ed students as possible. If we do not do that, then we run the risk of having an obliged expense beyond what we've budgeted if more special need students come into district. Conversely, it could happen the other way around, that we over-budget. So, it is a challenge administratively, but I want to assure you that we're trying to give you the most accurate, up-to-date figures as possible, even now, between when this was sent out to you even earlier today, this morning, about the rationale and the budget last, last Friday, I think it was. So, in the first paragraph, the certain, the first number, the, will cost, this is the placement of students from Union School District member towns will cost four hundred and sixteen to twenty-eight. That is correct. And the next number is also correct, at one hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and forty, or a seventy point two percent increase. These are outside placements. So, these are students for my needs that we've made every attempt to accommodate and meet their needs in the school. And they are, by the process of special education staffing, with the parents' meetings and assessments, placed outside of the school. The, the, the next line that talks about, in addition, on-campus special education costs for Leland and Gray are up one point six percent. You should change that from one point nine. The, and the, the, the next line is true, that the, the increase is, is based on the needs, special needs of students in speech and language services. We also, the next paragraph is, is, is pretty well as stands, although the exact number of students, we, we don't know. We're planning for that number of students, but we don't know they'll all come. We just have to make sure we got them. We think the number of students will remain about the same. Might go down some, but we're not promising anything there. The next paragraph says, "The total cost of special education at Leland and Gray is, for two thousand fifteen, sixteen, is projected to be one, uh, one million five hundred and two zero nine nine." Then, the next line says, "This includes the four sixteen to two eight," which you've already seen in the previous paragraph. That didn't change throughout- which you've already seen in the previous paragraph, that didn't change for outside placements, and the in-house, that is what we're serving in Leland and Gray here. That number changes downward a bit, from one million eighty-nine, as it says, to one million eighty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-one for students with special education services on campus, that's here on campus. So then, when it says, which is a fourteen point two eight percent increase, it will be a fourteen percent increase year to year. And as noted there, this doesn't affect Leland and Gray very much, but we are now, by law obliged at the supervisor union level to employ all special education instructors and paraprofessionals and case managers. So that's going to be a change for the elementary schools. Leland and Gray has already been contracted, we've already been contracting your, your teachers', case managers', and paraprofessionals this year. So I'm open to questions. Abby's here to certainly explain any, any concerns or questions the board may have. Yeah?
I have a question. When I look to the proposed, proposed budget plan, the reimbursements, the block grant, intensive aid, extraordinary aid to, for special ed, which comes to about eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, does, is that to Leland and Gray to offset this one million?
Yes.
Number? Okay. So the, the number that we actually are spending is more like six hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah, and I would like to, I would like to just make a comment as the special ed director, because this is, this is a dilemma for almost all high schools in the state of Vermont. Enrollment in regular ed is going down. Special ed is staying the same. So what that makes, makes our percentage higher every year. That's, that's, that's the reality of what's happening.
Any other comments or questions?
Some more information to contribute. I was asked by the board to present data showing the trend in two issues, the student-teacher ratio. I have graphs and a chart here that shows that for, from FY twelve on. And I think I'll have enough to pass out to most of you people in the public after you get your copies.
So while you're passing that out, I guess I was expecting this format tonight. Go ahead.
I was gonna say the same thing. I mean, I, I have a few questions. There's some high-level stuff, but traditionally, we've been provided with a lot more detail at the first reading. Do we have a timeframe for getting, you know, what we've sort of, after being on the board for several years now, I've come to expect as the budget? I mean, there was, the first member of the public that spoke had information that I don't have, and I don't see it in here, and I don't know where it belongs, and I don't see where it fits. I assume that that nine thousand dollars that's cut out of music is part of the twenty thousand dollars that's gotten co-curricular. But it's hard to defend a nine thousand dollar cut. It's one thing when you don't see that athletics took an equal or bigger cut, or what took a bigger cut, or where? Where, where's the rest of the detail? But it's just the same thing, right?
Bud, do you want to give them a timeline of when we can?
We're talking about this.
Well, that's a format.
I understand that, but I mean, this is broken down by function. I know we have different.
Broken down by function and object. We're really talking a matter of days to get that detail ready to send out to you. I apologize to the board for not having the detail you're used to at, at this meeting. But we're, we're pretty close to providing that. It really needs a, another level of review in our office, so that we know we're sending you accurate information. But today being Tuesday, it's certainly conceivable we could have something out to you before the end of the week, so you have that to review well before your next meeting.
Okay. It just makes this a little more difficult.
Well, I think you should ask your questions, because it isn't that, it isn't known. Now, the member of the public who spoke didn't have privy to any information. They were speaking from what they understood to be the case. I know that I've met with Ron, and we've talked about what that nine thousand dollar cut would mean, but that's as well as a grin. It really is a matter of setting the priorities within the music faculty and department as to how best to build for the future, where to put that investment. Certainly, the administration is not in any way taking a position about the value of music, but we were directed by the board to come up with a zero budget increase. And we've gotten about as close as we think humanly possible at this point, that we can recommend. So we wish we were in a different position, as all the board probably wishes, but this is where we're at.
So before we move on to this student-teacher ratio, there's a pretty substantial increase in the, this is grants, I would assume here. Almost three hundred thousand dollars. Almost five percent increase. Second line down, governmental rent revenue. I guess what that assume, what I'm assuming is we're, we're, more money is being shifted from the SU toward Leland and Gray than others?
Well, the, the way that figure, oh, I'm looking at the revenue details. The, you take tuition and, it's a simple calculation. You take tuition and local income, which is just a couple of small items, and you, you subtract that from the total revenue needed. And then that governmental revenue is going to be a combination of state and local sources.
Okay. Um, comments or questions? I, I know you have plenty, but go ahead, Tom.
Well, I'm just going back to the rationale for a moment. Starting with the language section, I'm just wondering that there was a low enrollment in French. I'm just wondering if that was because of the block scheduling issues that we've had with French before that was mentioned that when we had our last budget sessions? Or what was French up against, basically?
I'm not aware that it's a particular scheduling conflict anymore than the other foreign languages are. And we had, the, the enrollment in middle school, so levels one and two, French, were close to what we found with the others. But in high school, that was not the case.
Oh, please.
So if I could speak to that a little bit, and I guess so before, I'd like to just preface everything here with that Anie Sekay, who's been the French teacher here for over thirty years, she can't be here tonight, and she would like to express her feelings about the elimination, the Chinese elimination of the French program. And so she's asked me to do that, and it's just a very simple statement, in that she feels strongly that French has an important place in the world, in Vermont, and here at Leland and Gray. I would also like to speak about the program. And I want you folks, since this is your first time to see this, I want to listen to what you have to say. You've opened this, and I guess what I'd like to address, this particular semester for the enrollment in seventh and in eighth grade, so level one of seventh grade. Currently, she has nine students. And in the eighth grade class, which is a level two, she has fourteen. So those students will continue throughout the rest of this year. The programs that were reduced because of low enrollment for the upper levels, those courses are, would be taught at the same time as my upper level Spanish classes. And yes, in the previous years, you've heard me talk about the scheduling conflicts, particularly with the AP English, where we lost a lot of our students there. So we're not against AP English this year, but we are against AP Calculus. And so I do know for a fact that students are not taking both of our classes because they're in the AP Calculus class. And in fact, I have students that I'm working with as independent study. So that next spring, when the AP Calculus class changes its time of the day, then those students can come back, at least to me, to a level four. So, so I know that where it says low enrollment, that they average around eight. In fact, hers are higher, for me, I actually don't have the Chinese. You guys do the enrollment, but I know for Spanish, my seventh grade, level one class, I have seventeen students. My eighth grade, I have fifteen. And then my upper level classes, the current third level is, I have nine students, but that'll increase next semester when I have level four. So those were the classes that were affected. But they're higher than what it states here, and in fact, in the past years, they've been higher. So.
Thank you. So, so AP, if it's against AP Calculus, which is less, less number.
And we are offering a lot of AP classes, and our upper level students, level three and four, they have to make choices.
Absolutely.
And with the dual enrollment program, this is another issue, because those are the, we offer that for level three and level four. So in fact, those students can't take our classes if they're going to be in those other, because of the scheduling.
It's been, it's been the problem since I've been on this Leland and Gray board, which is fifteen years. And I'm sure it was there well before that as well. I will say, though, just anecdotally, it's really not anecdotally, but, but I, what I'm understanding from the commissioner, secretary, excuse me, of education, as if anybody has gone around and listened to her presentation that she's been giving to school board members all over the state, this is a real problem, not just here, but everywhere. You know, schools reducing sections, you know, of, it's not only things like foreign language and music, but it's also science, electives, and things like that, all over the state. As our enrollment is declining, schools have to, you know, our, our, our expenses are going up anyway. And we haven't gotten to the topic yet, which we will tonight, I'm hoping, about what our enrollment looks like and what our tax rate, you know, is going to look like. Because we all know that if our enrollment, and we know our enrollment's going down, we're, we're facing some serious challenges with our tax rate. And so this is, I, I, I'm not trying to explain anything, or minimize anything, or make a big deal out of anything, but these are facts. And it's something that we, as a state, need to grapple with and decide, because our students deserve absolutely everything they get. And so it, it's such a, you know, it's such a problem for us all the time, every year, with this sort of thing. But it's just getting a lot more difficult now because of the enrollment decline, you know? And, and, you know, you mentioned dual enrollment and, and the AP courses. We've always had AP courses, long as I can remember, a long time, but dual enrollment has changed things some as well, so.
So I guess at some point, I do have more to say on this topic, as well as the dual enrollment. But I really want to hear what board members, because this is your first lines at it, and so I'd rather hear what you have to say, and then if I can, speak to it later. But I chimed in only because of that piece about the low enrollment. I do need to clarify where we are at currently.
Does anybody have any other comments about the foreign language piece right now, before we continue? I think it's good to get a full perspective of this budget if we can, but I don't want anyone to not have questions. Do you do, Jeremy, have some?
I mean, it would be nice to have, like, your, your enrollment numbers are great, but like your, you mentioned like this, your numbers, the eighth grade number was like one lower than the seventh grade number, which to us is somewhat informative, but as a percentage of the population, because the eighth grade class is particularly large. Like, it'd be better if, like, if I could see details and numbers about a percentage of each class, just so we can understand it, like, because if we've got three foreign languages, and we're a school of this size, and we're thinking about cutting it down to two foreign languages, if we could see percentage-wise, not number of students, which is not really functional, but percentage of student body, or percentage of grade, so we could see what, I mean, because if there is one language, language that's particularly not popular, then the other two, then sustaining that third language maybe is something we should look at and cut it.
I can actually look at that right now, if I could talk to you, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy.
The other details, I was looking at Green Mountain, and Green Mountain has two full-time language teachers. And, you know, for that comparable schools, I mean, the offering, offering three languages at our school with this many teachers is, you know, not, not something that every school offers right now of ours.
Do, do you know how, what the population of the student enrollment is at?
They're about the same as ours. They're in the three hundreds, kind of low three hundreds, I believe.
Oh, I thought they were a little bit bigger than us, but.
I don't think they're much bigger than that.
Well, Burn Burton has three languages. Braderboro has five. I don't, student body-wise, I'm not really sure.
Different size schools, different type schools, too. Burn Burton certainly is, you know, one of the approved independent schools, but it's tough for us to compare ourselves to Burn Burton.
One of the interesting features of visiting Mill River and Otter Valley schools over four days, while we were continually told this was not about comparisons, each of those two schools, five hundred and three students, five hundred and forty students, only offer to foreign languages, and, and at neither schools, it is graduation requirement, but, thank you.
Okay.
Just have one observation here. Among the program reduction sections, foreign language jumps out as the only one where no reconfigurations was possible. It's a downright reduction. Correct?
In, for budgeting purposes, that's correct. But there are continuing staff at, we anticipate continuing staff at Leland and Gray who may be able to teach another section of French, but that would be based on enrollments.
That's the last sentence.
So similarly, it's, it's, we don't, until students enroll in the classes, we don't know exactly how many science or social studies electives are going to run, or even sections are going to run. And based on that, because teachers have dual certification, they can teach in one department or the other, and the same is true in French. But we, but depending on the numbers, we can also look at online learning, and if they want to continue, certainly, it's based on student request.
So the students who are finishing level two French, if they want to pursue level three, their options would be to do it online?
Yes. Or if there's sufficient numbers to go on to level three? We'd have, we'd have to look at that.
I want to ask that, I don't know if you can, all right?
Go ahead.
That, okay, when we say sufficient numbers, well, having fourteen students in a level two class, if all of those students, if they were still the position, chose to continue on, which also would enable them to have the opportunity to earn the dual credit, and then continue on even further, would we not allow that? Because obviously, if there's no other to get a position for, I mean, let's say in-house.
So Gerald, to answer your question, the students always come from somewhere. And so the way the, the process works is that students make their course requests at the start of the second semester, February, March. Contracts are offered in April, and at that time, we know how many sections we need for each area. And so if all fourteen students want to be in French III, it means they're choosing not to do something else, so, which may mean a reduction somewhere else. So I'm not saying it's impossible, but I, but it, it will have an impact somewhere.
Somewhere else, there has to be. So maybe if, I, I guess I want you to speak, if you're going to continue about foreign language.
I don't know if we are right yet.
Or so then I'll be just giving an overview and then coming back with more details. I want to know when's the most appropriate place for me to say more.
If you have something to share about foreign language, again, I think, well, I think it's important that you go ahead and do it now, because I think the next thing we're going to jump into is this enrollment thing that Stephen had on the sitting. And he's got the per pupil thing, so can I allow, do you guys mind? Please.
Yeah, please. Okay, well, I guess, thank you. So first and foremost, I want to talk about the program of foreign language, the importance of this, as we know, of languages throughout the world. Being a French, French origin here in the state of Vermont, many of our students have French-speaking relatives, parents, even grandparents, French throughout the United States. Let me see, there are over ten percent of US population is Franco-American, primarily California and Louisiana, each having million phrycos phones in their states. From our northern borders to Louisiana, which is widely used. In the world, there are twenty-nine French-speaking countries as the first official language, compared to twenty of Spanish and eight in Chinese. So the advantages of our students having that level of fluency, basic of two years, so optimally higher levels would enhance not only their possible livelihoods in the future here within the United States, but also perhaps international work. It's used by hundreds of organizations. I would like to suggest that instead of looking forward to eliminating the program, I would like to suggest that perhaps the first two levels of French are maintained and then again, depending on enrollment, looking at possible increase for a semester here or there, possibly through in-house teaching. I would like to say, could the board suspend or table this elimination of the program for another year? I think firstly, due to the seventh graders who are in the program right now, taking level one, that they've invested this whole year, that they certainly should be given the opportunity to have level two so they can complete what's mostly required by colleges as two years of foreign language. And again, I agree that for level three, there's the possibility of either online coursework, a community college course or a course through another college. And we do have enough resident French speakers that maybe even aside from an actual course, it could be conversation partners. You know, so maybe we could have offered those upper levels through a variety of pathways, let's say. So I guess I would like to say I feel very strongly about eliminating the French program entirely. Yes, other schools for our size may only offer two, but that's again, as we, we know, we don't want to be just like every other school and losing enrollment. We want to attract students and attractions for our local population. Part of that is the variety and richness that we offer and in languages and in multiculturalism, through music, the arts, through our coursework. Ms. Kay has taken numerous trips abroad with her students that have had life-changing experiences. So I really urge the board to look at what would it be? And if a figure could come up, whether Mr. Bonus is able to give us a figure, what would it cost for us to at least maintain a level one and a level two program? Because students who are looking at our, our schools as a potential place to parents and students to spend their time through their high school years, when we continue to limit our options and eliminating the French program could very well turn off quite a few people. So I really would like to say, you know, let's look at maybe some other options. What are some other creative ways? If we had a figure, what would it take to just maintain a level one and two program? Then we can look at.
So it looks like it's still, I mean, there's still a possibility if there's enrollment for the level two, that's.
Right, but in the, in the future, for next year perhaps, but then when we're looking down the future, we're dealing with this.
But he did mention about the seventh grade being able to move on, and I think that, that's still.
Right, but if the seventh grade only moves on and to eighth grade.
No, I did that, yeah.
But then there's no new induction of students, then the program ends after next year. And once it's gone, it's gone. It won't be back here.
You asked a very big question, if I can answer it financially.
Yes.
You know, a third of a position is twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. So there might be perhaps some other ways, whether through fundraising, grants. I mean, before, I would want to see this entirely eliminated and I see the benefits of students learning foreign languages. I know how difficult and how it is not as productive for students to do it online. I've worked with students, if they can get through the basic first two years, then a higher level student has a better chance of it. And especially if there's someone that could do conversation partner instead of just a class, I would support that. But to eliminate it entirely, once it's gone, it's gone. And I think that would be a serious shame and I think we would all have to hang our heads. So I'd like to, that to consider. Later on, I'll speak to the dual enrollment about possibilities of where funds could come. So I guess what I'm saying in a nutshell then is table the elimination of it and give opportunities for maybe some funding. If it's twenty thousand dollars, I've been at fundraising, I've taken students abroad and we do a lot of fundraising.
Just for clarity, it's not really a question of tabling. I mean, what we need to do is, I, I just want to make sure that people understand. We need to come up with a budget to present to the community and either it will be in or it will not be in. But the tabling piece, which is something separate, I think, is what you're suggesting, to find alternative ways.
Give us another year.
Well, well, I mean, if we're giving, if we're giving another year, that means we have to budget for it. And so that's why I just want to make sure it's really clear. There needs to be funds, resources for any course that we provide for our students.
Right.
And so, you know, it's not a matter of tabling. I mean, we, we can put it off for another year, that could be a choice of ours, but we still have to.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if we put money in for just the eighth grade to finish out the second year.
No, I'm hearing you. Right, I understand, but I just.
We need enough money to maintain it.
Right. You're just suggesting we don't eliminate it at this point in time, which means we, we would need to come up with the resources to fund the program.
Could I very briefly add some information to the co-curricular stuff here? It says, and I'm not disputing the number of the twenty-seven number of students, but it's misleading, I feel. I have.
Can you, can you just point to what you're looking at and where you're.
Right now, I'm looking at the, the.
Budget rationale?
For the budget.
Okay, so put.
And I'm on page three of four. It talks about the music course enrollment.
Okay, thank you.
It says the total number of students participating in the after-school music program is just twenty-seven. And it talks about this, you know, how much it costs. And that seems like, oh my God, we're spending really a lot for twenty-seven students. But it doesn't take into account kids who do more than one activity and they are all-year activities. The jazz band last year was thirteen. Pep band is tied to the high school band, which was twelve kids. And that's a low number for pep band because the band had a low number. Acapella, like Dan said, is supposed to be a small group. It's nine. Last year, we have thirteen now, but it, the very function of it is to be small. Samba band, fifteen. We only had four in middle school jazz band last year. But still, we, so it's quite a few more kids that did something. Then the program director things, they're for things like the Memorial Day observances. Both the high school and middle school band went to that. There were twenty-four kids in middle school band that went to that, plus the twelve for high school. So already that's thirty-six at that particular event. And then the district and all state, we had three kids went to the all-state music festival. That's only three kids, but it's the all-state music festival. It, it really makes our school look good. We had thirteen kids do two different, two different district music festivals that they had to audition for and they got into. We had a student who participated in this thing called Music Camp where she got to write music for the Vermont Symphony Orchestra. That was something, you know, yeah, and she was in most of those other music groups too. But I feel that the, these stipends reflect working with those kids in a very big way, all year, a lot. So the twenty-seven is, I think misleading. It's not wrong, but it's misleading. That's all I wanted to say.
Thanks for clarifying.
I just want to say for the record, there's no intention to mislead by administration. We're in a very difficult spot making decisions to come up with a budget.
Putting those two, the big stipends next to the small number of kids, it's not misleading, but it's a use of statistics that makes it seem different than it is in my mind.
I appreciate the clarification of the public and the board. I just want to assure you there's no intention there. We're just trying to make sure that there's a reason, you know, some reason behind the logic where the administration makes very difficult choices.
Yeah, and then, and let me, the, the reason, like Dan said, cutting particular programs. The reason is Mr. Goodmoat and I decided that probably the high school band, high school jazz band was the, the top thing that we wanted to keep, which is a rather large number for the all-year program. And there isn't room for any of the other programs if we do that at the contracted amount. I don't know if the contract can be changed so we can stick more things in there or what, but it, it, it only allows for having one co-curricular group if that group is high school jazz band.
Could I just add, remind the board that the challenge that your administration faces is presenting a budget which you have the ability to pass, to get the votes. Last year, we had three defeats. Oh, sorry, two defeats, only two defeats. Dan corrected. So, you know, we're, we don't, I mean, nobody should envy our position. I'm just saying that we're in a difficult spot making tough decisions about how to come to that kind of a budget. And when the budget is passed, and if the budget is passed, the implementation of that budget is then once again the responsibility of the administration to make the best choices to serve the best interest of the most students. So if things change regarding costs and personnel, changes in personnel, you know, that, that affected the bottom line favorably, or health benefits, whatever, any number of things could change in a way to make it possible for the kinds of things that you're advocating for to be implement, you know, be implemented. But the reality we face right now is trying to get a budget passed.
So what, what, what's really important to me is that we don't lose everybody we've got in the audience before we go through the full thing here. And, and there are things we need to talk about, like our enrollment, like our student-teacher ratio, like our spending threshold, which I'm hoping we've got a sense of where we are.
Okay.
Which means it relates directly to enrollment. So I, I want to make sure that we have a full picture while we're having, I mean, not, not that this isn't critically important, but I think we need to understand where we stand. And so could I get you to start on the first hand out?
The first hand out has student-teacher ratios. It has two graphs. It looks like this. There's a double line graph down below and an enrollment graph in the top. This goes back to FY twelve. That would be the year of F, two thousand eleven to two thousand twelve. And so you have the present year being FY fifteen. That's two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. We have three hundred fifty-one students. That is the, what's called the student census, the fall student census report. And that's the number that is used at this time of year to figure out the assessment for the WCSU. The, if you divide that number by the number of teachers presently employed, we have thirty-five point three-three. You see the, the, that's down at the bottom of the table there. I provided the calculations so that you can figure out how you get to a student-teacher ratio of nine point nine. The reason I added a special line for with special ed is because I'm not certain of the previous year's data, which came from Frank Rucker, whether it included the special educators or not. But I know for a fact we have four special educators in the building here contracted by WCSU. So if you're going to divide the students by the numbers educators, professional staff in the building, you'd end up with a number of eight point nine. The, sorry, questions?
How are you projecting student-teacher ratio without?
I'll tell you.
Okay.
FY sixteen, we project at three hundred forty-three students. We also, as you see in the presented budget, projected budget, have thirty-three point six-five FTE staff on campus, plus four educators. That's why there are two lines down there at the bottom when they calculate. So you divide the same three, four, three by the thirty-three point six-five or the thirty-seven point six-five and you get a ten point two or, and a nine point one.
So this is with what you're proposing for staffing?
That's right.
Okay.
Then if you really want to get concern, you go to the FY seventeen. Now let's hypothesize that you were going to get to what the legislature wanted to have in two thousand twelve for a student-teacher ratio of eleven point seven. Right? I'm just going backwards here. So you divide three hundred thirty-two students, which is what we project to have for FY seventeen. That's not next year, that's the following year. And if you divide that by eleven point seven, which is a supposed goal ratio from the legislature back in two thousand twelve, down below, you'll see that you'd have to get down to twenty-eight point four FTE teachers. Now going from thirty-three point six-five in our projected budget next year to thirty, twenty-eight point four is pretty grisly. Pretty challenging. I'll restrain the colorful language. But if you include the special educators, then you're only at ten point two because presumably as Abby projects, we'll have a sustained student population of special needs, but our general population will continue to decline. Now, the reason we can be pretty confident about the projected enrollment numbers is because despite arguments that if we're more attractive, we're going to have more kids here, of which I don't dispute, there's some influence, the fact is there aren't that many kids out there.
Got to come from somewhere.
So, and any of our sending schools or schools that are sending kids by tuition are going, are declining as well. For example, next year, Wardsboro, this year, they're sending nine students to us, sixth graders of, or now seventh graders this year. They send just pretty nearly all their students every year to Leeland Gray. That's Wardsboro. They're not part of the Union School District. They don't have to be here. They could go to Burnford. They could go to someplace else. But they choose to come to Leeland Gray. Next year, well, let's take this year. This year, how many sixth graders do they have? Three. You can't get more than three, no matter how many programs you offer here. I'm sorry to be so, so, how shall I say, frank about the situation, but it is, that's, that's what it is. Questions about those figures?
Question? I appreciate that. The, this was a recommendation.
Yes, I understand. It's not necessarily a present recommendation.
Right, wasn't my point. I think my point was that was a recommendation. There is more talk about, you know, looking a little harder at that, you know, whether that is going to become a stronger.
Well, I did add, I did add from the information that was shared at the regional board meetings that occurred with Rebecca Holcomb, I did add the second line there. The Vermont student-teacher ratio for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, that would be in your FY fourteen column, was nine point nine. So in fact, Leeland and Gray had a ten point one, did better than the state average.
Right. That's for all grade levels though.
Seven to twelve. Oh, yes, the nine point nine is for all grade levels, you're right. It's a K two.
Which is, which is honestly takes.
Yeah, we're only taking a piece of the.
I mean, if we were looking at just seven, twelve, I'm not sure that number of nine point nine would be correct.
I don't have that figured. It's a good point.
Okay.
So then the other graph, sorry, questions? The, the other graph is really not very much of a much, but it's the beginning of something for the future. It, it has a little tiny line on the second graph and. It, it has a little tiny line on the second, uh, graph and, uh, second bar. And it, it really is, it's just trying to get at another, uh, number that is thrown about at the state level, and that is how many adults we have in the building and how many students per adult employed in the buildings we have, schools we have. So, um, I only have data from this year and, uh, and projected for next year, um, based on our budget. And so, uh, you can see it doesn't vary too much. Um, but it, you know, it has gone up slightly from six point four-six. It would go to six point five because we have reduced force. I mean, it's, it's, you know, numerically, that has to happen in order to get, uh, any change in that at all. Similarly, the previous one about student-teacher ratio. And I don't have a state number where it says there Vermont, students per adult ratio for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen was, and I can't find it. So I had to, I'm just leaving that for something to research and see where, where we are compared to this date. Now, I handed out another one that I don't have copy. Did the public get, uh, some copies of this? This is a long thing like this. It's been out, uh, before at a WCSU meeting.
They're at the end of the table there.
I'll have to make some more copies for the public.
There, there's some at the end of the table there. I don't know if there's enough.
I'll make, make sure. Can you make copies for everybody, uh, Melanie? So this is a, this is a, from a huge spreadsheet. Uh, I think Bud actually put this together for us. Uh, this is a huge statewide spreadsheet of all the schools in the state. And, uh, what you have here is a, a group of schools that, that are, are similar to us. Um, you can actually read on the columns, um, you know, the differences in the size of the schools. That's what your, you know, third column in, well, it's one, two, three. There's one called FY fourteen equalized pupils. Um, and so, uh, that is the, the, uh, it's an important figure for the state. Uh, and, um, it doesn't necessarily mean they have these fractions because you don't, every student doesn't count the same. High school students are one point one-eight now. I think it was to be one point two, but, um, they, uh, what this does, the bold one is Leland and Gray, and you can see that we've ranked these by expense, uh, per, uh, per equalized pupil. Um, this is not the same number as the threshold. Emily, I remember asking about the threshold. The threshold is predicted to be sixteen, what, what do you got Bud?
So the, uh, the excess spending threshold for, um, for this year is sixteen, one sixty-eight. We don't have, uh, we don't have a new number.
Okay, but that isn't to be compared to what we have here. Uh, unfortunately, this is not, these are not comparable figures. But it is a comparable ranking. You've got education spending per equalized pupil, which is over about one, two, three, four columns from the right. That would be the number that would be concern, of concern regarding the threshold. Now, the threshold for the public's information is an established number by law. It's, I think, one point two-three, or one hundred and twenty-three percent of the average statewide public school tuition for grades, uh, nine through twelve, or seven through, seven and eight are sometimes calculated differently. At any rate, uh, that is a number you want to stay below because if your, uh, education spending per equalized pupil, it goes over that. You used to have to vote twice on the budget, once for the budget minimum and the other for the excess, but now that's been sunsetted. We don't have two votes anymore. Uh, but what we do still have in effect is the double penalty for any dollars spent over that threshold. So if you spend a dollar over that threshold, it costs you two. Got that right, Emily?
Correct.
See your understanding, right?
Very expensive to go over the threshold, which is just for anyone's, I mean, at, at the last meeting, the Leland and Gray Board asked for a budget to be presented that didn't exceed the excess spending threshold.
Now, this data is available on the AOE Agency of Education website. So if you want to look at other information related to this sort of thing.
There's a lot there, believe it or not, on the AOE website.
Yeah. So, that gives us an idea of where we are, uh, you know, in terms of our cost. And this comes under, I think, a misnomer, which is the effectiveness, education effectiveness, uh, title by the state, which was imposed upon them by the legislature, which said effectiveness was determining how much they were spending per pupil, not what you and I might consider to be effective education.
So if we were just, just, could I help you out here? But if we, I mean, we know we're looking at a decrease in, um, enrollment from this year to next year. We saw a decrease in enrollment last year. We were very, very, very close to the excess spending threshold last year. Um, and I would assume, given the decrease in, um, enrollment this year, we are.
I think, again, I'm, I'm working with numbers that aren't.
Which we were last year as well. I mean.
But I see, uh, with what I can see now, I see we're, we're going to be close, but I don't see us exceeding the, the threshold.
And, and so that's with the budget that is being proposed right now in front of us.
That's correct, right.
So, um, anything we add additional, which we knew last year as a matter of fact, um, anything we added additional was going to send us over that excess spending. I just want to, I just want to make sure that we understand where we are in that, in that area. If we're that close, because we were really close last year to it.
I think you're probably in a very similar situation.
Uh, we are going to try to get.
And that is, as, as you know better than I do, because this is my first year, your fifteenth, those numbers, those numbers from the AOE will, will change and will refine those, those estimates.
But this is what we need to go on is that number that we have in place, which is that one sixteen.
Sixteen one sixteen.
Sixty-one sixteen. It is sixteen one sixteen.
So we hope to have, you know, when, when the details of the budget are available, Bud, perhaps we'll also have from the agency, the actual, uh, projected equalized pupil. And then we can actually divide the number out and figure what we've got once we've eliminated. See, the problem is that this is called state rank, I'm sorry, it's called the education spending per equalized pupil. That does not include all the spending that you have in a school, interestingly enough. So it isn't as simple as it would seem to take the num, our full budget of seven million and divide it by our three hundred and, uh, forty-three students and come up with a number that would not.
Right. Last year, we had three hundred and sixteen point three-eight equalized.
Curious number since it doesn't relate to the number of students.
But equalized pupils. So, um, I'm expecting that flow this year.
Right.
And, uh.
I think that's logical assumption. Probably not by much.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a question.
Could send us, you know, if we lose even one equalized pupil, that puts, you know, make a difference.
We had two targets from the board. One is to stay at level funding expenditures, and the other was to stay under the threshold. We can't confirm or deny where we are with the threshold at this point, but we think we've made it.
Um, so we'll need to be able to confirm or deny that before we vote on this budget, which is, so whatever. Um, okay. Questions or comments from the board? Howie, I noticed you came in. Hi.
Sorry, I ran late.
If there's anything that you need, no, if, if there's anything you need to be caught up on, please don't hesitate to ask. Cut.
It's obviously so, it's a difficult situation. If all is down, we have to cut the budget. You know, it's, uh, it's a crazy funding formula that the state forces us to, to go by. You know, one student more or less makes such a difference in tax rate. It's just crazy. You know, I know how you guys have agonized over this. It's not easy. Just how many versions of the rationale that we saw come through here. You guys are really working hard to make this work. Um, we have to sell it to the taxpayers. We can't, we can't, we have, I have people coming to me all the time saying, there's less kids. What's going to happen? Why does the budget go up when there's less students?
Right.
So, you know, my hat's off to you. I thought I was wearing my hat.
Um, there, there's something else that I think I should mention. I don't, I'm not sure anybody outside of Newfane and Brookline are aware of this, but, um, the, Newfane passed, New, Newbrook passed a project that's going to up our tax rate considerably in our two towns. And, um, while we applaud what they've done, I think it's also something we need to keep in mind. We, we knew, I mean, you know, we had a challenge last year with our budget. And part of the conversation that maybe all of you didn't hear, but, um, at our last meeting was, we, we are really trying very hard to have our budget pass first time around this time. It is a challenge for us to get information to community members, um, given the manner in which we vote on our budget. And it's tough for people to come out in the evenings. So we're doing the best we can. I, I mentioned it during, I'm going to say it at the board meeting because I know it's going to impact your office a little bit. When we have our meeting next, on the, on the second, um, we're going to be putting that in the paper, maybe even a box ad, I'm hoping, special budget meeting to make sure people are able to come out and share their thoughts with us. But, um, they won't all come. I mean, you know, they won't all come. And our responsibility as a board is to make sure we present a budget that we think we can defend and, um, support and get support for. So as challenging as that is, um, that's what we're going to end up doing. Go ahead, Patty.
Where will, um, copies of this rationale and, uh, the detailed?
They get pu, they get pub online. We, we put it on our website immediately. Um, as soon as our board sees it and, and don't have any drastic changes this first time around, it'll go up on the website if they didn't already.
Right, so summary sheet.
Changed this afternoon. That's why it's not there. So, I may assume it's not there.
Yeah, I have to confirm, uh, a couple of the numbers, but this summary that you see will be posted. Except I'm hoping with this three thousand dollars and special ed, it might come down a little bit, but, you know, any little bit. The detail will happen subsequently. Now, I think I'm, I'm asking for direction from the board, uh, you know, and if you want the whole, uh, you know, details out there for the public to look at, the thirty-five dollars for VICA on somebody and so forth, that's fine. I'm just saying that it is a lot of detail, and if the board's interest is to be entirely transparent and get it out there as, as published in the last annual report, then that's what we'll do. Uh, the question is, does that really inform people's decision? As Joe was suggesting, you can look at the details and figure it out a little bit more, then that's fine. We should do that.
Well, we have to take into consideration also, um, whether it appears that we're not being as transparent as we have been in the past. We have never published a budget that wasn't at least, you know, detailed in the annual report.
Oh, it's fine. I'm, I'm, uh, I mean.
Uh, how, how do you all feel about that?
I think if we're going to see it, everybody should.
Oh, yes, that's, that's absolutely true, but you, you haven't, you haven't seen it yet at the, at the public meeting, okay? So, you know, I, I certainly can send it out as you get it and put it online if that's what we're directed to do.
And what would be the alternative?
That you have it at the board meeting, where we're inviting the public. But if you want it up there, uh, prior to that, we can post it.
Yeah, I'd need it because I want to look at it and be prepared at the meeting to discuss, you know. I mean, I need time till, I'm not in that competition. I'm not in.
That's fine. I, I, Bud, I got the message.
Full budget up to the board and then on the website.
The rationale will also be revised with the numbers I said tonight, corrected regarding special ed. Um, and, uh, the other, if I can add some other perspective, the board's consideration of this budget. Uh, you mentioned Newbrook, an issue there. I can say that the Townsend Board is determined to pay back at least a hundred thousand dollars on their two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar negative fund balance. That's a polite way of saying, uh, an debt, um, which has been accumulated, uh, over a couple of years. And it's largely, the board is very much concerned that they don't have a positive fund balance. And of course, you as a board don't have a positive fund balance either. And as you can see at the bottom of this budget, uh, there is an effort to, uh, to, uh, put yourselves in a more positive, not, more positive circumstance at the end of FY sixteen regarding your negative fund balance. The, the towns that have a positive fund balance are Wardsboro, Dover, and Jamaica. Actually, Newbrook, uh, Newfane and Brookline both have a positive fund balance. It's, it's fairly small, fairly minimal. Um, then, uh, so what one member of the public actually is, 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 uh, drawing my concern or attention to is the fact if the elementary budgets are up, uh, because they don't want to reduce force, or for whatever reason or circumstance of the town alone, um, and the public is faced with a choice between voting for their elementary school budget in the town and coming to the ballot box and voting yes or no on the Leland and Gray budget, that's the challenge you face with the board in terms of getting a budget passed. Um, it's a tough choice for the public to be in. Uh, but last year certainly indicated that we cannot count on the general support of the public, um, for the Leland and Gray, um, programs that we're, we're providing. Uh, that is, uh, I think a letter to the editor was speaking to that, uh, last week saying, if we shrink our sense of what's possible just because budgets are shrinking, what then? Who are we then? Well, I propose that we really have a problem of having to deal with living within reduced means and providing the best we can within those, and that takes greater creativity than we've been able to exercise in the past in terms of school reform and instructional reform.
And I'll just say something. I know Howie mentioned about the ed funding, and I'm not, I, I don't need to say anything about the ed funding, um, system that we're in today beyond the fact that even if we change it, money comes from, you know, I mean, we do need in this state to look at spending. We really do, because we know that as, we are on a trend. And, and if anybody wants any more information about that, go on to the VSBA website, look at the situational analysis. It's simply data, graphs, and it's a, it's a, it's a, um, PowerPoint presentation that's a video that's been narrated. It has, you know, specific numbers in there that show the growth in spending and the decline in enrollment and all the related issues around that. And, and it's a, it's useful to look at that information. If we change our ed funding formula to something different, it means taking, and we don't reduce our spending and our enrollments continue to decline as we are seeing projected, um, and that's on that as well. Um, you know, our spending is going to continue to escalate, and whether we take it from income tax, whether we take it from whatever kind of tax, we are going to be spending it. And one of the things that Rebecca Holcomb has been sharing in her presentation to, um, school board members all over the state is that, um, no matter what, she's being asked to reduce her budget as well by like a four or five percent this year. They are not, you know, they are not funded anywhere near well enough already. And we're struggling, you must be struggling all the time, um, using the AOE as a resource.
Yes.
We, we, we really need to grapple with this issue in the state. There is no question. It's something that we as a board and we as, as communities really need to figure out what we're going to do. It's expensive to educate kids. Um, I just want to go back to this briefly. We are number seven on this sheet for, um, in ranking and expenditures. It's for equalized, per, or budgets for two thousand and fourteen for equalized pupil. We're number seven. That's, um.
Of Union schools.
Of, of Union schools, correct.
So Green Mountain is not, right? And it's, it's Green Mountain.
Green Mountain is down, um, Green Mountain is fourteen. And then, um, spending rank of budgets for equalized pupil, Green Mountain is a hundred and ten, and, um, Leland and Gray is twenty-seven. What, what I want to mention about this is that we are right now a, a high-spending high school in this state, and that has been creeping up. We have watched, as we've been handed this sheet for years now, we've watched it continue to climb. We used to be right down about that middle of the page, around the fifty percent. We used to be right down about that middle of the page, around the 50% top, 50, whatever. But, but we've continued to climb up and now we're well up into the, the top third. And, and we as a board need to be able to address that as well. Especially given the fact that our enrollment is declining like most other schools. There are very few school districts that are seeing any increases and most of them are around either, you know, the independent schools. People are probably familiar with what independent schools are. Burnburnt was mentioned tonight, that's one of them. And then also around the urban areas where there seems to be more growth. Those are the only areas that seem to be increasing. Go ahead, you have a question? Please do. Introduce yourself. I'm sorry, you guys came in off.
I'm Dale Stevens from Newfane. I've been around.
Yeah, I know.
Relatively new to this area, not to Vermont. And that is one of my points, is that you were talking about the decreased enrollments here. One of the things I'm concerned about is you selling off your crown jewels to subsidize the rest of the, the programs that are here. One of the things that attracted us personally was when we started looking, we certainly looked at other schools, Middlebury, Burnburnt, U32. We looked at a lot of schools. But there were certain programs at this school that jumped out at us and said, this is where we should take our children because this is a phenomenal school. They seem to be very nurturing. They have a lot of great programs, including the music department, great music programs. At the same time, you also don't wanna lose people that are here. If you just become another run-of-the-mill high school, then people are gonna say, well, you know, maybe we have to look until we get to Bradenburg because, you know, what's the difference? You know, I don't wanna, this is just a great school. I just hate to see it change. I think the teachers here are great, the staff is great. And you have a lot of attractive things that if we could just hold on to those somehow. Maybe when the economy turns around, people are gonna say, you know, this school is where I would go.
Thank you.
I'm just saying, you got some good programs here, and that's what brought us here.
We all agree. It's true. The other thing after this that I wanna just ask about, and, and that is, I, I know our focus needs to be and has been on our core academic programs and strengthening that. And, and it's our job to hold the administration accountable for the outcomes of those programs. I, I'm not, I, I haven't got any numbers in front of us, but we haven't seen huge increases in our outcomes. But that being said, one of the things I'm, I'm curious about, and I hesitate to even ask it because the last thing I wanna do is have any, you know, it tends to happen anyway. But, but we don't wanna compare course to course, you know, department to department. But are we seeing declines or increases in our core enrollments and our core academic programs? And are we also, this is sort of a second question, not, not just related to that, but are we seeing courses where there are a limited number of students enrolled in them? In the past, maybe everybody doesn't remember, but in the past, we, we've sort of said, you know, we, we can no longer, I mean, music was one of them. Ron will remember. We said we, it was music theory. And there was like just two kids enrolled in it. And even that one was a struggle, you know, to redo this. But we ended up not doing that course. We also did that with Latin and some other courses because we had low enrollment in a single course. And we, we, we just couldn't deal with that. So what about our core academic programs? We, we talking a lot about our extracurricular, our, our music and arts and all that. But what do we look like in our core academics?
In terms of class size?
Yeah, yeah, class size, interest, yeah, in general. And if you don't have a response to.
No, I do.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say.
So the average class size in English is 16. The average class size in mathematics is 15. Sorry?
Speak up.
Oh. Can you hear me?
Can you guys hear?
In physical education, it's 10. In science or STEM courses, it's 14. In social studies, it's 12. So they're all higher than in the other areas that I mentioned. Art and music, it's 11, but we don't have a reduction in music. In art, it's 10, as mentioned in the report. Computer science is 12. It's as much limited by our technology as anything in terms of what we can offer for computer science. There, there is a proposed reduction in family consumer science as well. And those, and that's reflected here by the average class size is quite small now too, so.
The other part of that question, do we have many core academic courses that have low enrollment? Like when there's, do you, do you know? You may not even get aware of that, but.
No, I, I, sometimes we have the unfortunate scheduling issue that in, for example, in eighth grade this year, there's one section with, of social studies that has like 25 kids in it and another section that has something like five or six kids in it. But when you average the, the class of eighth graders, some 16, seven students divided into the four sections, it, it's an appropriate number. So the average is important. No, if there were other areas, I mean, we did really attempt to come in with a 0% increase for this year. And that, that was our target, but we were unable to make changes with the science department absorbing the STEM courses that are our new ticket courses. So it's all been absorbed within the 5.0, um, science teachers. I do have a question for Abby, which is Stevens started this meeting, or the, the budget portion, well, he ended with the, in our review of the budget rationale on the last page about a difference, a reduction of $3,500 in special education costs. So does that mean there's a corresponding reduction in revenue because of the reimbursement?
Yeah, there would be a reduction.
Right, so how, how much would that even out to be? Maybe 2,000 or something?
We'd just think you get 7% back for special education.
So, oh, so what, so more like seven, less than that, 1,600 back? Because there, there has been some concern mentioned about music and calling it our, our crown jewels. And we did come up, come out with a budget at this level if that would be, that, that funding would be shifted over to a crown jewel.
Well, yeah, well, I just remind you that the only thing the board and we can control at this point is the expenses. You know, we can't, we can't be basing our budget on what anticipated revenues we get and then spend more because, for example, it would make sense then since we get this reimbursement from special ed or because we, if we had extraordinary special ed or if there were state-placed students, we'd get 100%. You can't base your budget on recruiting more of those students in order to make money. You know, that's not gonna happen because you have to vote on the expense. And when the expense is divided by your students, number of students, then you get to the threshold. So I just wanna make sure we're not, what, what that gets to is our ability, once a budget is passed, implement the budget and allocate the resources within that budget appropriately so long as it's meeting the, the plan and intention of the board.
I'd love to hear from our students. You guys have been listening so patiently, if you don't mind.
It's, it's. Yeah, absolutely. One thing that I just keep meaning to say, we, the issue of like the 0% increase budget thing, that it was brought to the student council just to hear our opinion, which was pretty cool. And I think just like basically our response pretty unanimously was that we shouldn't cut anything. And I know that that's all what we would all want in a perfect world, and it's not a perfect world. But I know just in terms of student voice, there's, I don't know, not a lot of support for any of these cuts for a lot of reasons. And I think that's just really important to keep in mind.
Were, were, was the student council made aware of the challenges of enrollment that our?
Yeah.
Enrollment is going down?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Evan, did you have anything?
I didn't have a lot to say. A lot of my questions were answered just listening to the discussion back and forth between the board and the members of the public. I don't have many things to say.
Okay, jump in any time.
Of course.
Go ahead, Alman.
Transportation, the contracted transportation, is that something that is regulated by law?
Uh, no.
And I'll tell you why I'm bringing that up. When my kids went to Newbrook and then to Leland and Gray, I live off South Wardsboro Road. There was no school bus up that road. We would drive them down to the Newtine Common where there was. Now I see the bus go up and down the road. I'm sure that costs money. Is there any leeway to reduce the bus service and save some money?
Yeah.
And shift funds over to programs?
Answer his first question, which is, are we expanding our bus routes? 'Cause I, I mean, you're right, and our kids never stop the bus either. So now you're saying, I mean, the bus did go up and down our road, but it was the Wardsboro bus that was coming down through. So I'm just asking if we've expanded bus routes?
I am not aware. I would have to ask Scotty DeVasnik to see if there's some improvement there. This is part of our regional bus contract with West River Transportation. And it would not be in their interest, nor when I've asked them to put in an extra stop for a student. They generally resist this because it's not in the interest of keeping within their cost estimate and the contract we have. Now, we do have a long-term contract, although is a profluous renewal status of that, but.
Well, it's a, we have a long-term contract, but the actual cost is only expressed for a year at a time. So what happens is, as you get into a future year, the state has a figure beyond which you cannot increase your contract cost. This year it was, if memory serves, it was 2.6% increase in costs to maintain that, that contract. And we were limited to that. So there's, there, I, I think there's some pressure on, on them to remain profitable as well as there's pressures on us to maintain our, our costs as low as we can.
So that's perfectly legitimate. But I mean, I, I just happened to go to those pay orders here. And I just noticed that, you know, we paid $11,000 for 15 students' transportation to Wyndham. That's a lot of money. So why, why not have the bus go down to the bottom of the hill on Route 30 and have the families drive them there? I know it's, it's impractical, but $11,000 for 15 students seems like a lot of money.
Yeah, it's a long ride down to the bottom of that hill. A lot of families can't afford to drive their kids down six miles. It's a 12-mile round trip. And Wyndham is traditionally provided bus service for the kids in our town to get to Leland and Gray.
They, they are in that situation in Wyndham because they own their own bus. And they haven't joined the regional bus contract. So that really is the distinction there. And that was an arrangement previously, understood agreement that Bud's predecessor arranged. It is paying a percentage of the students of the School of Wyndham, K through 12, that attend Leland and Gray, which is 42% this year. Our, we, in other words, we commit to 42% of Wyndham school district's expense for their bus minus the state transportation reimbursement grant they get. Which is not too different from what we're doing with the regional bus contract where we have a revenue that comes in for transportation. Now, that's because the state does feel it. It makes more sense for the schools to provide transportation than not. But obviously, their support is insufficient to meet the total cost. So it is, it has turned out that since Townsend joined the regional transportation system and no longer owns their own bus, the school district of Townsend, being included in the regional bus contract was able to reduce the per-student cost of that contract for the town so served. However, that, that didn't include Wyndham. Wyndham has asked me to get a projected bid from West River Transportation regarding giving up their bus and joining the regional bus contract. The difference would be about, well, the estimate was at $56,000 and they presently pay about $30,000. So it didn't seem too attractive to them as a Wyndham school board. Doesn't mean things can't change. But I did wanna clarify with the public that actually by law, no one is obliged, schools are not obliged to provide transportation to students. And we could have a whole lot of people driving on our roads here, back and forth, six miles or whatever it is, back and forth, to provide transportation with their individual students, our car pool as they, as they could, could provide. I don't think any of us believe that's better for the environment, nor necessarily the best way to get kids to school on time and get them home the safest way. But that is certainly something that could be, could be tried regarding your budget expense. Keep in mind, you wouldn't save all that money because there's some income coming in there on transportation. Questions on the transportation issue? Thanks for asking. It's a puzzle.
I don't have a question, but I just, well, I've said this before. It's a shame that the state doesn't have a mass transit policy in place, that there aren't public buses running up and down these roads instead of yellow school buses, and that we have to fund diesel fuel instead of teachers out of our education budget. You know, these, these buses run up and down the roads and they're not allowed to pick up any other passengers because they're school buses. Towns with public transportation get their kids passes on public transportation instead. And this is certainly something that I would hope the legislature is gonna be taken up at some point in the future.
One way to fill a room is to reduce or eliminate transportation. It actually was done once in my tenure, not here. I think it was in Newfane. We actually proposed it once, removing.
Trying to get the school budget passed, I mean.
So it's a way to really upset people, no question. All right, other comments or questions? Patty?
No.
Sorry, I thought you had your hand up.
Well, I will, and just again, I wanna defer to the members to have your discussion. So I just wanna, on our budget here, so I just wanna clarify that this proposed budget has an actual increase of 0.18%, correct?
That's right. Although I predict with this $3,000 reduction from the special ed, it'll be down just slightly from that.
That would get added back in. So that 0.18 equals about 12,252.
Yeah, the difference between those two lines.
So the numbers, so one's percentage, one's dollar amount. And the amount of cuts that are being proposed overall with reductions in staff programs. What's that number?
Well.
That if we wanted to say, I mean, what I'm, where I'm going with this is if we did not make certain cuts, you know, what are some of those?
So what you're asking is what would this budget bottom line look like if we didn't reduce staff? Is that what you're saying? Or, or cut programs and reduce staff?
Certain one, yes. Maybe there.
I call your attention then to expenditures.
Page two?
No, no, it's the very front page. We're not going revenue. There's revenue is about three lines, two, three lines. And you have expenditures?
Yep.
Now, you see all that list there of, of numbers and increase and decrease? That gives you an idea. Well, generally, I mean, it, you know, these are programs. So it does include those supplies. It does include FICA, health, you know, includes a lot of things. But, but it does give you an idea that overall there, it's, it's, it's down 163,000 for general instruction. And, you know, you can see that, that tech ed, remember we, we pointed about tech ed was, was slightly increased there, right? You can see where those come out in the, in the positive on the columns, right? The co-op ed is there for just a little bit of a hair.
So, and again, reading across for foreign language.
Yes.
Was the decreases there. But if we were to look at for next year, then in fact, continuing certainly with the Level 2 program. But in fact, if we were to do the Level 2 and still offer Level 1, so that figured area. But in fact, if we were to do the level two and still offer level one, so that figured area, I think you gave before Stephen was, in fact, around twenty-five thousand dollars. So if something that that would be added back in to...
See, that, that's a, that's a, that's a full position there, eighty-five four.
Right.
And, and if you divide it out by three, you'd have more than twenty-five thousand. But we're allowing for the fact this is a senior member of the staff.
Right.
You know, that's one of my estimates, and I think it's still about right.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Now, I, I would also caution all of you that it's, it's certainly, the board has spent a lot of time on a vision twenty-twenty about where they want to be and what the school is going to value and what it's going to be supporting in twenty-twenty. And the reason for that visioning is to try to inform the administration as well as the public about how we're, you know, what the target is and how we want to stick to that and how we can fund and sustain programs to, to, to meet that vision. That's really the challenge. When we look at the individual issue about French or the individual, whatever individual topic you want to raise there, we have to caution everybody to challenge yourself to put it in the context of where you go in the next year. And of course, the graph that I showed you regarding projected enrollment and student teacher ratio is pretty daunting. You know, but I, I, I would be remiss if I allowed myself to indulge in self-delusion about what the prospects are. Leland and Gray as a school community is going to have to come to grips with some very serious changes in instructional mode.
And, and, and sustain the learning opportunities that are so valued by the, by the students.
I don't think, I'm not a dooming glue guy. I don't think it's impossible to do. I think it's able to sustain, able to sustain learning opportunities. But we have to think differently about how we are providing instruction and how we are assessing student progress vis a the standard, vis, vis the standard.
So following up on what Stephen's saying, I think that we as a board will need to have this conversation. But you should be thinking at, as a community about this. What he's saying is thinking outside the box, talking about other ways to, um, educate our kids. And while I recognize your, your comments, um, about moving here to Newthing and, you know, looking at these fantastic programs that we have, is there another way for us to be able to provide this type of top-notch education for our kids? Is there a way to collaborate with other schools? Because what is critically important to us as a board, and certainly our student board members have got to feel this way, and that is that we are, um, making sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our kids. And one of the things that's happening around the state of Vermont as we're, we're seeing these challenges, we're not the only ones in this place. And you all have to know that. Schools are doing exactly what we're doing. They're reducing. And parents and board members are coming out and saying the exact same things all over the place. And what it's looking like are the communities, um, that can afford to continue to, um, support these programs despite decreasing enrollments. And we've been one of those communities, all right? Our board has been, you know, suggested reductions several times in the past. And we have said we didn't want to do that. We've heard from the community, we've heard from the staff, and we've changed our minds and we've reinstated, you know, programs. We've been doing that in the past. So we've been one of those communities, and I say community, I mean Leland and Gray community, there's five towns, who've been maintaining programs. But we're not, we're, you know, we're in a place, as you know, looking at the enrollment numbers that Stephen was saying, that we, we know we can't any longer sustain everything and make it work. What's happening around the state is, um, offer things like tonight, things are being reduced. And the communities who can't afford it, their kids aren't getting the same education as the students in the next community. So for example, um, kids at Leland and Gray may be, um, getting a really good education. But if you look at that chart that was on here and you look at those schools, for example, Green Mill, I'm not sure what their course, courses are. They're spending a heck of a lot less than we are in, in some measurements here. And while I don't have any idea what their programs are, um, we need to start thinking about that because every student in the state of Vermont deserves equal access to the same educational opportunities that every other child has. And that's not happening as much anymore. And if it, you know, if it were my choice, that's the thing I'd be looking at right now. And I, you know, I, I think we need to think in a different way about how we educate our kids. Four walls is probably not going to be alone our future. I think there are going to be changes in the way we educate in, um, you know, this dual enrollment and the personalized education plans and the way the, um, education quality standards, which I would really recommend everybody go onto the AOE website and look at those ed quality standards. They are a lot more flexible than the school quality standards were, um, in the way we are, we deliver education, we can deliver education. They also make some very strong statements about what our kids need. And those needs are growing. And while those needs are growing, um, the, the social needs of our kids are increasing as well. The social, emotional, and we're seeing that not just here. We are certainly seeing it here, but we're seeing it all over the state too. And I really worry about, um, whether our kids are, are getting the support they need. And we need to step in and make sure that a child isn't coming to school, um, hungry and, and has a place to lay their head. Because we know there are times when we have homeless children even coming into even our little school where we really care and support. We have a great environment. But as I've been here, we've been increasing, you know, just in the last couple of years, dental, health services. We feed our kids year-round now, you know? Because we, we started with, you know, when I was first here, we hardly had, we had a lunch program. But I mean, now we have breakfast, lunch, and we do it year-round. And that's because the need's there. So, you know, I don't mean to want to get, get on a bandwagon, but I, I, I just want to make sure everybody understands. This is not just our challenge, this is the state's challenge. And we need to be thinking about what we're going to do. Samantha had her hand up and up with you.
My comment, kind of, there's one that goes back to, um, the fact that the New Brook Board, you know, the New Brook community, New Brook, Leland and Gray, did put in the energy bill.
Yep.
That was a full house. That's more people that have seen out in a long, long time. And I can tell you, the people that were saying no, were saying just no. No discussion, no, you know, they weren't going to support it no matter what, you know, if it was lessened or whatever. They didn't want to see any increase. So I think when we look at the number of students that's declining, you're also looking at an increased number of taxpayers who are disassociated with our schools. And they don't want the tax burden. So they're not invested in our schools as, you know, as part of this tax base. So when, um, you know, I have two kids that go to this school. And, you know, I, I would love to see, uh, you know, sustained programming. I'd like to see more programming, you know, I'd like to see a lot of things. But I do know that, um, that's a pretty impossible task. And I know that the taxpayers, a lot of them are going to say absolutely no increase. I do not want to see that. You know, regardless of what programs are being cut, I really don't, I think that those are the taxpayers that are going to go to the box office and say, no, thank you. So I, I just caution that, you know, there's a lot of taxpayers who are not invested in the schools at this point. And it's because their tax rates just keep going up and it's, they're, they're disrupted by that effect.
Yeah, it's very common across the state, or hand up a...
Do you have a hand up to...
I just have a question. I, um, because I am new here, in case you forgot, it's Dale Stevens, you know, the... The Journey East program, the funding for that program is, what, I don't understand what that, what they get out of that funding for that program. Because of my understanding, it's just, it's kind of an exclusive club, kind of, it's something like kids are allowed to go on this. And they still have to pay a huge amount of money to even get into this program.
Darryl explained the Journey East program, but she also has something else.
Sure. So I, I, so... So a crown jewel at our school is Journey East. Every other year, about twenty students attend. We have brought a few students from regional high schools.
And they pay to get into this program?
Yes, they do. They do. Um, much more because they have to pay a, a half-year's tuition to come... Right, right, right. But, but in terms of, if we have a student who comes from New Mountain or Brattleboro, they have to pay a half-year's tuition to be in the program, which is some seven thousand dollars. And, uh, so when the program began, it was, um, grant-funded by the Freeman Foundation. And it was a fraction of the cost to travel to China in nineteen ninety-nine, and it is today. And, yes, yes, it's only recently that the funding...
Yeah, we had it for ten years and two years about.
But associated with Journey East is that there's the school within a school, which we, which is, uh, the next time will be, um, spring twenty sixteen. There are other Journey East programs, such as the Mongolians who came this fall, who practiced with the, and performed with the music students, uh, who did other activities with their students that had public performances, uh, as well as other, um, the, the Chinese summer camps where they had host families and they have activities at the school. And so the funding that has come locally has been for the professional services contracting with the director, who is, I don't know if I should say this on camera, but is terribly underpaid in, you know, it's really a, a labor of love and, um, commitment to, uh, continuing the program. So that, that's what Journey East is about. So it's, well, so I wouldn't say it's an exclusive program, but it is for one semester out of, out of, in a two-year cycle, a school within a school, which engages many other, well, it's about four or five other faculty members as well.
I'd also point out that the criteria for being accepted to the program is based on what you can bring to a show. It isn't based on academic, uh, performance. It isn't based, we've had students of special needs that have performed very well and traveled. This is really not an exclusive club. I object to the nomenclature club, just to make sure that public is not...
But there is a fee of more than two thousand dollars to go to China.
But there, there is, there is a needs-based situation there that's also possible. It isn't, it, you know, that we certainly are sensitive that this is not just people of means who get to go to China.
It's twenty people, and we're arguing about twenty-seven in the music department being too low. And people have to learn the music in order to perform adequately to be accepted into the East.
The two fit together, there's no doubt. Um, I think we're bringing ourselves back around to the same, you know, reality that we don't have enough butter to bread all, you know, butter for all the bread we want to eat.
What we need to look at is how much we get out of a program. And we do get quite a bit out of the Journey East program.
Can I add one thing to that?
You can, and then Evan, I think, has something to say.
Uh, it's, Journey East is not just kids going to China, it's China coming to Leland and Gray. So there, every kid at this school benefits when, you know, the Arts College of Inner Mongolia sends a troop of kids to our school to perform. It's not just the kids that go to China that benefit from this program.
Right. That's true. Evan, did you have something?
Yeah, um, as far as, um, butter for bread goes, um...
Sorry.
And, uh, you know, as far as the, the whole, uh, argument of attraction is that, yes, there are a limited number of kids that can come to Leland and Gray. We're aware of that. However, there are also a small subset that are attracted to this school. Now, Dale and his wife said that they settled for this school because of certain after-school programs that they saw that they liked. Now, if I saw that correctly, we have twenty-one thousand dollars of revenue per student coming in, right?
No, nine thousand.
Nine thousand? Okay, nine thousand. So he has two girls that come here. That's eighteen thousand dollars a year for foreseeably six years. That's a lot of revenue. And, um, you know, we can't pay for the market research to measure which programs are bringing in more kids or more money. However, um, if I did hear correctly, um, three thousand dollars just got dropped from special ed. And I noticed on the, on the rationale that it said that point one eight percent was as close to level as advisable. Now, that included that three thousand dollars. Now, why are we throwing that three thousand dollars away when that could make a huge difference in something like after-school music? That could...
I don't think we are. I mean, we're, we're looking at the budget as a whole. I, I, we just found out about that tonight.
So Stephen just said that it should be lower after that is reduced. I propose that we use that money on a gamble that maybe that program would bring in some outside kid. There's also the fact that the Journey East program makes the school attractive to kids that want to come here from exchange programs. I'm currently hosting for the full year, a girl from China. And she's here to learn her English and to brush up for American universities. If we can become a powerhouse for bringing in exchange kids, that could solve some of our enrollment problems. And so that expense really is an investment and less of an elite club that is only for kids that can afford it or know their stuff. And on top of that, with our decreased, um, field trip budget, you know, we get a performance for the whole school to be culturally immersed, immersed in Chinese dance and music culture that we could not have afforded otherwise. So really, that's, that's what I have to say.
You've had your hand up for a while, Darren.
I would, I would really like to hear from our board, um, getting closer to making a decision about dual enrollment. What we had built into the budget was that if we paid for all of the courses, but that wasn't a final decision that was made by the board. And so it may be that the fifteen thousand proposed, you may say, no, let's just do the two per student as mandated by the state, which would then be nine thousand. Or you might say a middle ground, which is that for students who are eligible for free or reduced meals, and there is an incentive that for students to enroll, um, because it, it is possible for, that we're, don't, um, have all of the students eligible enrolled. And then they get other benefits like, um, SAT fee waiver and other things that they may not be aware of. But we try our best to communicate that to them. But dual enrollment is very close, so maybe if they, that dual enrollment would be unlimited or they get an additional voucher, uh, if they're eligible for free or reduced meals, so they demonstrate the need. So that, that's another place where there may be a cost shift. Because I think the case has been made by, um, uh, those present.
Well, you know, I, I've talked to a bunch of constituents and thought about it myself. And, um, you know, I, the program, the program as I understand it is to encourage kids who might not go to college to, you know, try it and see that they can succeed in a college-level course. And, you know, this, this, when the program was designed, it was designed that two courses would be enough. And I think it's fine if we leave it at, you know, we'll pay for the two. That's the state mandate, that's the program, that gives you that sense of confidence. Sure, it'd be great if we could just pay for everybody to take as much as they wanted to. But, you know, again, that's, you know, it would be great if we could keep every program too. And I think that that's a way that we can shift money from something, you know? And, and not to say that kids couldn't take a third or fourth dual enrollment, but I, and, you know, speaking as a parent of dual enrollment children, I would pay the hundred and fifty for my child to do that, um, you know? And I, but I think that the school, I think that it's not, that it keeps, it's in keeping with the spirit of the program to say, look, we'll, we'll pay for the two. We're budgeting for the two pro- courses. And after that, you know, there are ways we can get you those credits if you want. But it's not, it's not the taxpayers' responsibility to, to pay for that.
So Darren, the, if, if we were to move forward, I think you presented this the last time, and I'm just trying to get confirmation from you again. If I remember correctly, we can get more revenue out of this if we do use the dual, the, um, free or reduced...
No, we wouldn't get, there's no revenue to be had.
Okay, so what it, what it is, is that we qualify, there's something more, if we can get over fifty percent, was what you were saying?
If this, um, Stephen can speak to this more than I can. When, uh, when a school reaches the fifty percent eligibility for free or reduced meals threshold, other benefits kick in.
Okay.
But it's not related to a dual enrollment benefit.
Okay.
Yeah, it relates to food.
So, and, and what we heard last time was there are schools in the area who are, I mean, because I, I respect what you're saying, paying the hundred and fifty dollars for that third course, but there are people who certainly could not afford that, I'm sure.
The only high school I'm aware of that has some kind of scholarship is Brattleboro because we surveyed a half dozen schools in Vermont. And all of them were just doing two, planning to do two for next year, or they don't have a plan yet. Brattleboro, because they have the Career Center, has for some time been able to offer scholarships, um, for low-income... for low income, which they actually fund in their local budget, or if the student is in the Career Center, I believe it's unlimited the number that they can have, which is part of a Career Center grant in all the Career Centers.
The, the reason I'm asking it at all, hold on one sec. The reason I'm asking it at all was because Mike, at the last meeting, who felt very strongly and I don't want, I, I can't speak for him, but I just wanted to mention what Mike had said, that it's our duty and we should be offering whatever, and paying for whatever we can. So I'm not suggesting that I agree with that and I really appreciate what Joe's saying and, and, but I don't know how the board, it, it feels itself. I, I will come back to you, but I want to make sure the board does.
I'll speak to that. I agree with Mike and Joe. I mean, it's great that you can afford a hundred and fifty bucks to get your kid an advanced course if he wants one, but a lot of parents can't and it's not fair to the kids. You know, if a kid has a, any kind of disability, the sky's the limit of what the school will spend on that kid. But if a kid's gifted and needs an advanced course, then that kid's parent has to dig into their pockets and may not be able to afford it. That kid may not be able to get the, the.
You do remember there's still, there's two.
There's two, but maybe that kid wants three.
But it's not, it's not for the advanced kid to get some college credits. It's for the kid who's not gonna go to college, who says, I don't think I have what it takes academically. My family's never gone to college. I'm just gonna, you know, get a job and go on. This is to give them some confidence, to see that they can actually do it. This isn't for the kid who's, you know, top of the class, gonna go to college, to get three or six more credits that they can do. They can still take the exact same course. The only difference would be that we're not gonna be paying the extra fee for them to actually receive college credits. Still get the same education, still get the same opportunity, simply paying for the college credits to come or not. You know, that's not, that's, the program's not for the kids to get, you know, the, the spirit of it as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is not necessarily to get college credits for these kids who are gonna go to college anyway. It's to take the ones who aren't gonna go on and show them that they can do it and hopefully then let them go do their thing.
I would think there are a lot of kids who, who are really had, looking at college and anticipating a lot of difficulty paying for their college credits, snapping these courses up because it's a good way to get, you know.
Right. And, and just, but, but because, I mean, Bauman has his hand up, but I think it's really important you understand that, that there are, there are more and more, part of the reason why we're seeing increases in tax rates are there are more and more things being laid on school districts and taken out of the education fund. Um and, and the education fund was really supposed to be in place for our K-12 education system. Now, with dual enrollment on there and us having to take that on, that's additional on top of that. Um I think an area where we really need to be focusing is how can the state support our children as a whole to make educate, for higher education affordable? It needs to be. I'm not arguing your point. I'm just saying, is that something that our taxpayers are all struggling to make ends meet and very able to, I'm being told all the time, we can't live here anymore because we can't keep our home. Should we be taking that out of the education fund because of your criteria? I think we need to really think about that, about what, what really is our requirement and what is this, the duty of the state? I mean, kids are struggling with um college expenses. There's no doubt about it. So there are opportunities to, to, you know, figure out what we can do in that area too. Bauman, you had your hand up and then I'll go to Pat.
Yeah, just Danny, if this dual enrollment, the, the, the school covers two classes instead of unlimited, how much money are we talking about in terms of?
Uh two is nine thousand two thousand.
Nine thousand versus. Yes.
Nine thousand instead of.
Six thousand dollars.
Instead of, yeah, different.
Right.
Now, if I could just point out that if it's, that, you all know how expensive college is. If a student spent, if a student out of pocket paid for five additional dual enrollment courses, so say a semester's worth of college courses, um so above and beyond the two that were paid by the high school,
Right.
it would cost seven hundred and fifty dollars for a semester's worth of credit.
And what would it cost if they went to college?
Well, at UVM it would be seven thousand.
Right.
That's a good deal.
Sure is.
So they're getting a huge discount and they're going through this program.
Very much so, yeah.
But, but as we're talking about it, we're also talking about, you know, music, you know, art, foreign language. Patty had her hand up next.
Um, well, I, I love the dual enrollment. I think it's a wonderful thing. However, if we're struggling to keep our high school programs, our middle school and high school programs here for our kids, I really don't know how responsible we are by paying for extra college for them. I'm just not, I'm just not sure that I'm thinking that that's a good idea. At this point, if we're, if we are cutting entire programs from our curriculum, you know.
Well, I thought the point was that the, as we're cutting programs, we're trying to find new ways to compensate for that for the kids who need programs. We're not all.
Yeah, and we're, and they're getting two credits at college and then they can get more credits for one tenth of what they would pay if they really took them in regular college.
Right.
So.
So, so it's not, Tyler, did you have your hand up? Go ahead, please, go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure if I'm gonna word this correctly. So I think that right now we're, this is gonna be a time that we all have to work together. All of the communities that we live and work in, these families are sitting with budgets every day. How do they put food on the table? How do they pay their tax bills? We need to come up with some new ideas. But what, you know, and I think if we do, you know, the minimum two classes for now, we have some time. What about fundraising? FBLA, Student Council? Ha, I mean, it's not gonna s- get all the money, but it's a start for people who really might be interested and can't for, afford those classes. Also, maybe there's a way that the band can work together, have both the instructors, maybe have a school-wide jazz band. It, it's not gonna be a perfect solution. We're not gonna be able to come up with perfect solutions. We need to work together, try to fit things together that would work for the majority of the students, because that's what we're supposed to be here for.
So it sounds to me like unless anybody's objecting, we're, we're not committed to the fifteen thousand. Is that correct?
Yeah. I'm not.
So, so the question now is whether we figure out some kind of a scholarship program like Brattleboro does or we just say we're gonna fund the two. I mean, that's the question you asked, Dren, I think.
Yes, I'm not allowed to make a motion, so.
Can you estimate, like, how many of those hundred students would possibly meet the free and reduced? I mean, is it?
Probably a third.
A third? So it'd be more like, say, ten thousand instead of nine thousand if we sponsor them?
Um, I actually wrote that um ten thousand, eleven thousand. I mean, I would have to look at the numbers very closely.
Okay, we can still get that information. Gerald, you've had your hand up and apologized.
Thank you. Um, well, I am one of the teachers of the dual enrollment for Spanish and in fact, I was engaged with both SIT in setting it up and as well as I spent a lot of time with the coordinator of the program at Brattleboro High School before, before we initiated the program. Um what Brattleboro does is, um actually, they charge the students who are in the program, they charge them. Now, this may have changed because in a few years are they no longer, because of the state mandate now. So they can't even charge because that's where, and for those who were eligible, financial need based, then they were subsidized. But parents were happy to pay um the, the fee and it was basically, they called it registration fee and it was about a hundred dollars. And then at that time, um with the New Hampshire Community College, they were charged, I think, a hundred and twenty-five. So the school subsidized twenty-five dollars, but they said it really made a difference for the students and, you know, they had an obligation. It was financial. It was a hundred dollars. It wasn't a tremendous amount, but that they did have that, um, you know, level of expectation of the students themselves as well as their parents. And um so if that's not part of the equation that we can do, it's why, again, we write to propose some fundraising. But it's not just for the students who might not go to college because to get the dual credit, to get free credits from any of the institutions, um you have to have a high enough grade and at this point, we set the grade at eighty-five and above. So you have to even achieve an eighty-five. You can take the course. If you get less than that, um you don't automatically get, you don't get the dual credit. So just like at a college course, you're held to a certain level. So, so it does mean the student has to be trying. Um and it is also for the students who, whether they're the advanced students anyway, it's giving them that opportunity. And I've had a number of students now in the last, this is the third year of the program for foreign language, that they're acceptance into college, um when they place in, when they've gone through our level four programs, um when they do their placement tests at UVM and any of the other colleges, they always are placing into an intermediate or a higher level at the colleges. So they're saving themselves time and money and um they also are opening up new opportunities. I just had a, a recent graduate two years ago, because she was able to test in at an accelerated program at UVM, what normally is reserved only for juniors to do, there's uh two trimesters abroad. She's accelerated because of her language level that she can do it now as a sophomore. So she leaves in January for two trimesters in, in Spain back. So, um so it is also, so it's not just for the students who won't go to college. A lot of the kids are taking advantage of this because it's going to enhance where they go into college and those other opportunities. So it's a crucial, I think, drawing point for our school.
We, we certainly see the value of the program. There's no question.
But, so if it's changed now from years ago that the parents, so what about the parents who wanted this for their children? Because I'm paying a college tuition for my husband and I know the credits, the credit amounts that um maybe if the parents, if there was some volunteer or fundraising, something that we could do because that would help preserve some of the other programs and needs to again attract our students here. So.
But we can't budget for fundraising, so that's all I'm saying. I mean, we, we need to pass a budget here and so.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
Well, I mean, I recognize what you're saying. I mean, I totally in support of, I mean, I mean, we, we could also be going after a lot more grants if we could pay somebody to write grants for us too.
Right.
But that's not something we have been able to, even though we've tried for many years to do that, we haven't been able to fund that.
Can I ask Mr. Kelly a question about?
You can, but before you do that, I just wanna say, it's getting really late. This is the second time we've done this and I, I wanna make sure that the board, I, I, I wanna let Gerald do the one thing, but, but I wanna make sure that you guys are close to being ready. If there's something else, let me ask Gerald first, but if there's something else you guys need, that's coming up next, because we really do have to get out of here. Make, make it quick, you can have, please.
And thank you. And I thank you all. I know this is our first pass, has it? And we'll encourage as many public and local community students, everyone to get involved with this process. So what you mentioned as far as um events that you take these students to, um how many students participate and so if all these cuts are made, then Leland and Gray is not represented at all at any of these events? You've played at numerous events. You've featured places. Um that just.
We will continue to be represented in some way. The, like, the district festivals. I, I, as a human being, I have to offer that to kids. So, you know, so we'll see.
So once again, we're gonna need to get creative.
Yeah.
I um.
We make those.
Do you have a final thing that?
Yeah, well, so did Jeremy. So let me have Jeremy first and then we'll, then I'll move back down to you.
Well, I guess this, this should carry forward to future meetings, but I, I felt like we glossed over the hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase in the special ed portion of the budget and how that takes special ed, it's nineteen percent, almost twenty-two percent of our budget. It's a huge increase. It's an enormous increase and the rest of the students are having to foot the bill for the, say, six kids in the out-of-school placement and the discuss, is there a discussion over the out-of-school placement or did I have to? If there's no discussion over that, I think it needs to be really obvious to the voters that we're putting in bill for a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar admission.
Which we are required by law to do.
For six students. The three hundred and thirty-seven other students have to have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to have a, if they're by kids, it's worth that bill.
Okay.
I understand level funding.
I know, I recognize that. Let me let Stephen respond to it.
You're like, kind of jump through that.
I wish, Abby.
We have to step back from the abyss of putting the needs of special needs students in contrast and conflict with other students. It certainly is a very logical question, but I caution the board from indulging in that comparison for that kind of trade-off. It's not a trade-off. It's not a trade-off you could exercise. The process for meeting needs of special needs students is well-established by law, well-established by review and hearing officers. We consistently, under Abby Dillon's direction, have been able to claim a very exemplary record in terms of that process and also cost savings. So I, I know that my town of Mar, I just will, you know, get a little more objective. The town of Marlboro faced a quarter of a million dollar increase, a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of that on a two million dollar budget was due to special education extraordinary costs. Now, keep in mind that some of that money, in some cases, an outside placement, because it's an extraordinary cost, qualifies for ninety percent reimbursement after the fifty-six percent of the first fifty, fifty-five, sixty thousand. It's a complicated formula, but what I'm saying is that we look at this expense, but in fact, we, we end up having a revenue that does somewhat offset that. So when you look at the total expenditure, it is likely that well over half of that will be a revenue. But we still have to vote on the budget and the town of Marlboro recognized they had an impossible situation. They voted on a twenty percent increase in taxes, which I'm paying as a taxpayer today because we had no choice about that issue. The town said, we owe it to these kids. It's legally mandated. This is not a time for us to say, okay, we're gonna do without. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry to get on the, on the.
What we're asking kids to do without.
In, in fact, if we are obliged by the system of, of funding on a per capita basis to adhere to a threshold, we are. But we should not take it out on the special ed students or question the process legally by which we get to those kinds of placements. No parent here would wish to have a child in such circumstances.
And Stephen, I'm not trying to like say that we should prefer special ed spending, I know we can't.
Thank you.
What I'm trying to say is by asking for a level-funded budget and having extraordinary increases in our special ed funding, the money has to come from somewhere and it's coming from the non-special ed students. So thus, we are left with having to cut programs for non-special ed students that are here at the school because we have students who need to be placed outside of the school. I'm not questioning they need to be placed outside of the school. I talk to my son every day. It's clear there are students that need to be placed outside of Leland and Gray.
So, so, so following up to.
But my, but my point is we should be really transparent and really upfront and really kind of show that, I mean, it, it is the last item on the rationale.
Okay, fine.
It is, it is the, it is the, it is the, it is the tidal wave that all of the other cuts come from.
Well.
It is so much larger a number than all of the other cuts. And yet, I'm kind of, I mean, to me, it's like, so if we're gonna have to make these cuts, we're making these cuts because we're having to balance budget to meet with these extraordinary costs and we should.
And Abby did present before she left the reality that you will continue to face this problem because this, this, the need, students' needs remain constant or projected remain constant while, while the total population is declining. Now, you just hit upon what I, the reason I raised the issue about Marlboro is if, as a board, you wanna go with, which would be a hundred and uh, well, it's about seventy thousand for a percent. So if you wanna go for a two percent increase in the budget, direct administration. So direct. You won't, you probably won't have many cuts at all of anything. But the fact is, can you get that budget passed? You're, you're in the, you're directing us, okay? And I appreciate the comment and calling it to the question.
I think somebody else had a hand up, but Evan's first, so.
Oh, um, well, the discussion's taken a different turn, so.
And you can go back. It's fine.
It's all right, we've gone to Dren. We're used to it.
Um, so this is going from what you'd said earlier and I don't know if we can direct to the minutes if this is exactly what you said, but um that it's an increase of point one eight percent.
Right.
And it, it's expected to be less when we include the reduction of that three thousand dollar line item from special ed.
Yes. Yes.
And the vision of the student council was to cut the fewest programs. We're already facing significant cuts. However, in the rationale, it did say that point one eight percent was the lowest as advised. So, we would like to encourage another board member who has the power to do this to propose that that $3,000 line item stay in the budget, but gets re-appropriated for the after-school music programs, which affect students and is part of the vision of the student council that we cut the fewest programs possible for after-school kids. Point one eight percent versus point one seven eight percent or seven nine percent or whatever tiny of an amount that is, is a drop in the bucket that's not really going to faze voters. Look at it make a real difference in some kids musically talented after school. So, that is our proposal and we encourage a board member to propose that amendment.
It's not an amendment, there is no motion. But, but before you make the motion, I would also remind you, Evan, and the rest of us that we just talked about reducing another line in our budget.
Six thousand on the dual enrollment you were talking about.
The dual enrollment piece. Whether we say we want to meet the, try to meet the means of some, some students who are, who qualify for free and reduced has not been decided. But we, it sounded like the board did decide that they were not going to just free fund the extra $6,000 on dual enrollment. So, anyway, I'm not trying to tell anybody what a motion should be, but I think that that is part of the revenue.
But we are getting to the meat of the meeting here.
Yes.
The administration seeks direction from the board regarding how to make adjustments or changes in this budget if you have a strong, if you have an opinion or its consensus about it.
And, and I mean, a motion is perfectly fine. We can also just, you know, agree to, to direct the administration to come back with, you know, a budget that, that meets the expectations of what Evan so clearly stated.
And I can talk with our music teachers and find out a little bit more about what's possible be described earlier that, what did you say, a human being or? About, because Gerald asked about, well, what is the impact of Allstate?
Right.
And so, if there was more funding, what, what would that look like? And something else to share with the board about that.
And it may not be the only thing that, I, I would just remind the board that, that we're still in the development stage of the budget. There may be additional information at our next meeting, which is on December 2nd, right? Or there may be, you know, more needs in another area that they may come to us with. But, but I think, you know, it sounds like we're pretty much in agreement that we would like to try to direct some funds, at least in, in that direction. Are we in agreement on that? Does anybody disagree with that?
Just.
That was Evan's suggestion. Bruce.
I'm looking at this chart for numbers of students over the next few years. And to me, we don't take the number of faculty positions and drop them as this budget suggests, the next year is just going to get worse. And then the next year, it's going to get worse. And I can't see changing the number of faculty at this point. I think it's got to be, we've got to work at dropping the number of faculty overall. I know it hurts, but it's going to get worse, quite a bit worse.
But we're talking about an after-school program, not actually dropping full-time faculty at the end of the year. These are the after-school music program, wouldn't take away any.
Yeah, these are.
These are stipends.
These are not, yeah, not a senior's stipend.
But, but I, but I think Bruce's point is well-taken and how he expressed himself at a previous meeting on the same line. We said the exact same thing last year, if everybody remembers, what Bruce just said. Every year, we delay the, what the inevitable, it's going to be harder and harder and deeper cut. So, I appreciate your comment. Bruce, thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, so just to draw closure to what I'm, I'm getting as your dear superintendent is that you want us to go back in this budget, figure out what we can really do in terms of supporting music to the greatest extent possible. Look within the budget, the present budget as presented, for a different refined proposal regarding dual enrollment. I sense there's some board sentiment for having that adjusted in some way. I think we have to take that under closer scrutiny as Durin suggested regarding which students we're talking about and what, what, what we do. And then the, and then the apparent last-minute reduction in special ed, which could disappear overnight, I can tell you. But at any rate, I'm just telling you, these things change quite quickly, you know, be applied in that direction as well. I think that you can't figure that out yourselves. This is not a matter that's going to get resolved by a large group discussion at this point. There's more that we as administrators need to explore and figure out. I want to caution you regarding any of the numbers in this budget. Not any of them, but some of the numbers in this budget could be further adjusted because I, I have to present to the WCSU, the budget for the WCSU, which involves sixteen point five employees now contracted by the WCSU teachers, professional employees, providing instruction, either in special ed, art, music, PE, library, nurse, so counseling, so forth, throughout the SU. And, and your assessment of my particular position, as well as the administrators in my office and support staff, is part of that budget. So, you have an assessment in this budget that's included based on what we had at the time when we put this together. And I just caution you against banking on any of these numbers. Please do not be surprised if the actual total increase or decrease is, is, is different depending on how your proportion of students at Leland and Gray compares to the whole WCSU enrollment, because that's the way the assessment of the superintendent's office, administrative back office, support, finance and so forth is funded. And I know that we've gotten as close as we could get. And I do have a budget that is, I don't want to say publicly, but it's, 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 we're really trying to make sure it's level-funded or slightly below for the next year. So, we're not adding to the misery of, of local schools, except that your share may change.
So, at the next meeting, you'll come with that revised budget based on the feedback you've got tonight. We're also going to be looking at something similar to this coming out for all of us just as soon as possible. So, we can take a look at the detail around our budget. And we'll be, we'll have a little more knowledge about the Wyndham Central budget.
And we will, as soon as we can ask, get, get confirmation from the state about the equalized pupil and the threshold, we'll be able to provide that as well.
That won't happen until end of December, but.
Yeah, unfortunately, but we'll know before we vote, we hope. Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to say while you're pushing these numbers around, if you can get this budget to be level-funded, it is really going to increase the chance that we pass it.
I agree. Zero is going to be very meaningful on that line.
Or even slightly below.
Yeah, like minus point one.
Yeah, and be ready, be ready if it's not, if it's not level-funded, be ready to come back and do it again. I'm not, you know, I, I think you need to, you need to do what you need to do and present that to the voters, but be prepared that they may not buy it if it's going up, no matter how little it is.
Agreed.
Well, just to be clear, that's a mixed message, right? I mean.
Yeah, it is a mixed message.
Well, it's a mixed message in one way, but in another way, I mean, we just talked about, you know, you asked, we're giving you. We just talked about finding some other funds in here. The board just agreed that they were going to reduce that spending by $6,000. That can change, the bottom line, right?
Well, yeah, okay. The six and the three get to nine, and that's not twelve, so we wouldn't be at zero.
All right, I'm just saying. Go ahead.
Can I make a motion about the consent agenda?
You can, but we're not there yet, because we have another item on the agenda. So, what Patty so eloquently reminded us is that it is as late as we have ever done a meeting in recent times. The next meeting will be strictly about budget, we won't have to do anything else. The, the next, are, are we all set to move on to the next item? The next item on here is Leland and Gray's presentation on the WCSU board. I've mentioned this because of two things. One, I, I want the board to be very aware that I'm no longer going to be able to continue on the Wyndham Central board, given my other duties. But I am more than willing to continue on the Wyndham Central board through the budget development process. So, what I'm putting out to you here is a couple of things. One is that at the next Wyndham Central meeting, which you see here is November 19th, the Wyndham Central board knows I can't participate in that meeting, I'm out of town that day. But that is not a meeting that we will be making any decisions. It is, in fact, we can't really, because we've all agreed that we're not going to vote on the budget that night. It's when we'll be presented with a budget.
And you'll be given direction.
And we'll be giving direction. Lyndle has contacted me and said, "I'm going to be at that Wyndham Central meeting. I'm assuming Bruce is going, I'm assuming Joe is going. We'll still have our voice at that meeting." But we will not have three votes if there was any vote to be taken unless I resign from the position today. It's up to this board whether they want me to resign from the position today and appoint somebody else because I can't be at the next meeting or whether you want to wait until I'm here. I will be there available on December 3rd meeting. So, it's up to you guys.
We're not expecting any votes, right?
Are we?
Well, Marlborough has a motion that will be on the agenda about special ed, but I don't imagine that that would be voted on at that meeting.
I don't think we'll be voting on that at that meeting.
I also am concerned that we are not likely to have a full board quorum.
I also think that that Marlborough thing can't really be voted on that night because, unless it's just in concept, because it really will be part of the budget, right?
I'm not sure they're intending that for FY16.
Okay, all right.
I have to read the, I think I have to read the motion again. But anyway, it's, it's certainly unlikely that anything would happen there because I do think such a motion would probably want to have a, have the vote of the entire board. But it is such a challenge to get the full board to attend any meeting that. I think that the executive committee will be all we can maintain for a management forum on the night we.
No, if you're, what Joe's asking is if it was an executive committee meeting, would we lose our vote? We only get one vote if it's an executive committee. Would we lose our vote if I wasn't there? That's not true, we would not. Joe or Bruce could, could represent my vote. So, if it's executive committee, it won't matter. There will be a vote for Leland and Gray. So, it's up to you guys, give me direction, if you want.
Is anybody prepared to step up to the plate? I mean, if no one's prepared to step up to the plate, it's kind of a.
Someone's going to need to be prepared at some point. It doesn't have to be tonight if you don't want to, but someone's going to have to step up. I, I will tell you, I don't want to, the board gets to decide who they appoint. I think Lyndle might be interested in doing it at some point. If, if I weren't on the Wyndham Central board, I think Lyndle, who attends many of the Wyndham Central meetings, I think she might be able to be, you know, arm-twisted into it, just like we arm-twisted Patty into being on the negotiations council. All right, so we'll just leave it at that right now. And, and just so you all know, I, I also, you know, after January or after this budget vote, unless you guys don't want me to continue now, I probably will not be able to continue on as chair here either. So, there will be a new, new choice for you for chair.
Other opportunities.
That's right. And that's fine, I, I'm going to miss enough meetings. What's really important to me is that Leland and Gray is well-represented at Wyndham Central and Leland and Gray is led appropriately. And if I can't be here, I can't do that. So, I will be stepping away from that one, just so you know. Coming, coming up.
Congratulations.
Thanks. So, yes, Patty, you can make that motion now.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments if not all those are favor?
We need to correct the spelling of the student's name.
Oh, okay.
Julian's name is spelled wrong, but I don't think we need to pull it for that.
No, you don't have to pull it for that, but just tell me what is this? It's an editorial, it's not.
Julian.
J.
Yeah, it's, it's like, I forget what it was, but it was like Y or something.
Right. Thanks.
That's helpful. Does anybody know how to spell his name or I can look up on Power School.
We'll get it.
Who is this?
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Extentions? Okay, motion passes, bills and payroll. Somebody's got it, I need the, or you can. Okay, we have four warrants totaling $278,915.72 and two payroll, $233,390.23. Total warrants and payroll are $512,305.95. Is there a motion? Howie, is there a second?
Second.
Second all down the line? It sounded like.
Patty.
Okay. Any comments, question, they've both, they've all been reviewed?
Yes.
And signed?
And signed by two.
Did you sign?
I did.
Okay, excellent, thank you. All those in, was there, there was a motion. Okay, is all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Extentions? Do not walk out until you all confirm that our next Leland and Gray board meeting is December 2nd. We will need a quorum, we will need as many of you as possible here that night because I'm pretty sure we're going to have plenty of people, plenty of us here.
Excuse me, I think this is the last motion? Was it not the girl?
It was.
Oh, okay, got that.
That was it. And, and hopefully you got handed to you the.
I'm just comparing on the December 2nd meeting. Do you think it would be a good thing to start the meeting at six o'clock instead of seven?
No, that would be a really bad idea.
Joe says no. I think we struggle getting people to get here anyway, people are working and stuff. The other thing is, I really don't want to throw off members of the public. They're used to us starting at seven. I also think it's the only item on the agenda. We're, we have other things to discuss tonight. We're going to be very focused on budget that night. And while, while some of the conversation did go on a little longer, I promise you at the next meeting, I'm going to be a little more, yeah, I will. I just didn't think it was important, I think it was important to let it go tonight. So, that's why I didn't, I'm sorry about that.
Is the December 2nd meeting about the budget? Is the budget we're talking about on December 2nd going to be the same exact one we just talked about tonight?
Probably not.
It will be essentially the same, there will be changes, there's no question. We directed some changes tonight, so.
The, the administration heard from the public as well as from the board as to what things could be explored, including the proposal from your colleague there. And we'll, you know, we have to take an advisement. We're going to be influenced by what further clarifying figures come, come through. And I, I wish that the, I wish that we could just declare a point in time when everything's over and it's all done and we can't change anything anymore. But that's fortunately not the case now. It will be the case as we get into December, like if, like after December 2nd. At the December 2nd meeting, still, we can be directed to make some changes. But after that, it gets pretty tough.
Yeah, and, and what's important for all of us to remember is that every single time we get a budget in this three-meeting sequence we have, probably looks a little different. I remember it went from about 3.2 down to 2.8 last year without even any direction from us last year. So, I mean, it'll look different, go ahead, Bob.
On a totally different subject, I want to remind everyone and everybody out there that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Leland and Gray players, Wizard of Oz, with a cast of eighty-one students, thirty-one.
And, and they're Wyndham Central students.
Yeah, 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 elementary students.
It's really important to know, it's not just Leland and Gray.
Something like this happens once every ten years.
Yeah, I hear it's a fantastic program.
And before you adjourn, I just want, I'm sorry. As a public meeting, I just want to make sure that we thank our veterans. I know that in my office, we had a moment of silence, it's the eleventh hour of the eleventh day. I commend you, I mean, I'd suggest to all of you, if you want to hear a very nice tune, go on Google or go on iTunes and look for "Christmas in the Trenches." It's from World War I. It's about Planters Field.
I think there was a motion.
We adjourn.
Okay. Been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? We're done, thank you so much for.
Thank you.